... of the town council on July the 30th. It's a beautiful day in Garner. We've got a beautiful audience here and I'm sure the people at home are just as beautiful. This is a work session that we won't be taking many votes. We won't have many people testifying, but we do have a great meeting tonight. We have some fascinating things on the agenda here. We have some friends from out of town telling us about some downtown developments you'll hear a lot more about. We have the National Community Survey results. This is really, really interesting stuff, a lot of detail. We're going to learn about that as well. And not to mention, the U D O text amendment, which is very significant. It may not be fascinating to some of you, but it's very important stuff and we're going to hear it from some of our friends from outside Garner as well. So with that, there's not a pledge of allegiance or an invocation, and there's not even a presentation, but I would just like to say one more time, thank you to all of the people here tonight, sitting up here. This is the most people I've ever seen sitting at one of our meetings and that's a good thing. I'm not complaining. That means everybody's here and healthy. We're grateful for that. We have a lot of folks here as well. Thank everybody, all the folks in town who do a great job for us. And in the sound room tonight, we have Rick and Anthony who have gone to great lengths to make this hearable and understandable for us all. So that's my word for today is thank you. With that, we will ask for an adoption of the agenda, which is...
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we need the roll call.
Oh, of course. Thank you. That's why we bring two attorneys in case Terry forgets to tell me, we've got a backup over here. Thank you. So excited about the people that were here. And with that, we'll look to our town clerk to have the roll call.
Mayor Upton.
Here.
Mayor Proton Vance.
Here.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Thank you. And with that, we will consider the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion from the council members?
So moved.
Movement. A motion made by Mr. Matthews and seconded by Ms. Behringer, all in favor of adopting the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay? Thank you. That passes unanimously. And with that, we will move right along to reports and I'm going to start out by calling on Assistant Town Manager John Hodges to kick us off here, John.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Back at your May budget work session, our development partners for our downtown development site, L M G, presented an update on the revised plan for keeping the downtown Garner project moving forward. At that time, council gave direction for staff to continue working on the master development agreement and we have that tonight in your packet for your review. Also, our partners from L M G are here. Peter Floats and Nicole Jenkins are both here with us again and you've met both of them before. They're here to answer any questions that you may have as well tonight. We want to just give you, and for the benefit of the public, just a brief overview of the project. You saw this presentation back in May, so there's no new information in our presentation. We'll just do a quick recap. The project did change in scope and size due to some challenges that we had with stormwater and some other challenges with the cost of a parking solution that we originally envisioned for the project. The project now stands as a three-story proposed project, the first floor being 10,000 square feet of commercial space that we're targeting an expansion of our restaurant and beverage and retail business for downtown. And then 24 units, and you see a breakdown here on the screen of Studio One and Two Bedroom apartments. Just a brief schematic of the layout, how the 10,000 square feet would fit on the first floor with the lobby and other areas needed to operate the building, and then units for the first and second floors as demonstrated there. A part of our arrangement with L M G would be working on public benefit to the downtown. This project will be able to have parking available to it that we are going to be able to add along the railroad corridor. We have worked with North Carolina Railroad to get approval to add up to 40 parking spaces, so it will continue the Elm Street angled parking down to in front of the recreation center. And so that is going to be an outcome of this project. That may be parking that the town, we've already planned and budgeted for moving forward with that, but it will facilitate this building being able to be built, so it has some public purpose to it. But then so that the L M G project has some specific public purpose, we are discussing several ways that that could be accomplished. One was an idea that you heard before, a public kiosk, something that could be used in or on the building as a downtown welcome type of station. Also, Peter earlier gave you some examples of how they've integrated public art into the project. So we already have a commitment in our original agreement for some type of public art, but to be able to have the public purpose met, we'll continue working on what that actually looks like. And so let me get back to the rendering here. So in addition to those notes, one of the things that council members asked at the last time that L M G was with us, whether there was an ability to address affordable housing. And so you may have seen in the master development agreement that's before you, that there is a commitment for three of the units to be workforce housing, which is 80% of AMI, up to 80% of AMI. So they have met that, or they have responded to your request to address that in their proposal here. You will also see, this has not changed, but there's a placeholder for a purchase price for the property at $100,000 or the appraised value. And so our agreement would be working with appraised value if that is higher than the $100,000. And then I mentioned the other public benefits for the project there. So tonight, L M G is back to be able to answer any questions, providing additional information that they'd like to present. We'd also like to hear from council and the goal would be to receive any additional feedback you have on the master development agreement. And should council choose to authorize us to do so, we would prepare that for the consent agenda for the next meeting if council is ready for us to move forward with this agreement. So I'll pause there and answer any questions and also we'll have Peter come up and answer any other questions or provide any additional information that he has.
Any questions from council so far?
One question on the timeline, I saw Board of Adjustment process, what is that on the timeline? There's a line for Board of Adjustment process. I was just curious, does this need to go before the Board of Adjustment?
I don't believe we're currently proposing for anything to have to go to the Board of Adjustment. There was a possibility in a previous version that we might have had to do that to work around some parking changes that I think we will no longer have to do based on the action council recently took with the text amendment. Jeff's not in at the moment, but I believe that was probably originally in there. So we will note that and confirm whether that needs to stay or not.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, or any other questions from council tonight? If not, is council okay with us moving forward with this coming back for approval on the agenda on August the 6th?
This is where we nod our heads like this.
Yes.
This is not a vote, it's an indication.
Okay. Well, and we appreciate the support for the project. Peter and his team did come in, Peter from out of town and out of state, so if it's okay with council, I'll just defer to him for a moment just to see if there's anything he'd like to share with us tonight.
Let's get it done.
Wow.
Very good. Well, thank you, council. This has been a long time coming. We've been through some revisions that have been understandable, given all the changes and market conditions and other things, but we're very excited about being able to move a project forward and fulfill one of our visions for the downtown district. And this is going to be a great project for us to work collectively on with our development partners. So thank you all for your time and attention to this. Yes, sir.
Question, since this will be next week, is this going to be on consent agenda or we can have it as a new and old news and we're just going to, I mean, we need to ask the questions tonight, is that we're just going to...
Our plan had been to put it on consent, but that's totally, we can totally put it on an old new business if you prefer to be that way.
Here, here, and we've got the questions and answers. I have no trouble being on consent.
Okay.
I just didn't want to make sure.
Very good. If that's okay with the mayor and the manager, we'll have that on consent.
Excellent. Excellent. And thanks again to everyone who's been working on this for a long time, way before I was here. There's been a lot involved in this. It's in the right direction. It's an exciting thing for our downtown. We're very, very much looking forward to this. Can't thank you guys enough, Peter and Nicole, for coming today. And you didn't even have to get up and speak and it'll go through the consent agenda next time and you can watch us on TV. That's great.
I will speak to say thank you very much. We really appreciate your patience with us. We'll try to do groundbreaking work.
Wow.
Do that, Jay.
Great. Very exciting. Very exciting. Thank you. And with that, thank you, John. And we'll move along to the National Community Survey results and we will go to our town manager, Ms. Jody Miller, to bring us up to date on this very exciting piece of information.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's exciting to be with you this evening and share with you the results of our 2024 National Community Survey. My understanding is this is the first time that the town has done a townwide survey and we're excited to share with you the results for this evening. Also wanted to make you aware, you should have a full copy, a hard copy of the report sitting at your seat there, so you can follow along or take that home for additional reading this evening as well. So before I dive into the results of the survey, I want to give you a little bit of background on the survey itself. The National Community Survey was developed by the National Research Center at Polico in partnership with ICMA. And so ICMA is the International City County Management Association and they work with Polico on surveys across the country. It's known as the gold standard in resident surveys across the country and they work to not only provide survey results for individual communities, but they also work to collect information so that communities can benchmark themselves against other communities across the country. They've conducted the survey in over 500 communities across the country, as I mentioned. It's used as a strategic planning tool. The information that we have and the data that we have, we can use as we think about our strategic plan and priorities for the town. And it guides data-informed decision-making for fast-growing communities. And as communities like the town of Garner continue to grow, it provides us important insight to our residents' perspectives and experiences with the town. And as I mentioned, this is the first ever participation by the town of Garner in a townwide survey by residents. And so it essentially provides us a base level, our baseline of information for us to evaluate and continue to work on and improve. Examples of participating communities that are here in North Carolina include Raleigh, Durham, Chapel Hill, Morrisville, Asheville, Davidson, and Wilmington. I will share with you, I've worked with Polico and the National Research Center for many years now on the survey. I will tell you that those communities that participate in the survey are really the best of the best. They're looking for continual improvement in the local government services and are essentially the gold star standard. And so when we look at our, when we look at our results and we look at the benchmarks comparison, we really are comparing ourselves to the very best in the community and these in the country. And these communities also, like the town, continue to strive for excellence in our service delivery and continual improvement. I'm going to move my notes over so I keep stopping that. All right. So to give you some background on, all right, to give you some background on the methodology for the survey, the information that's in the results report before you are the survey from the randomly selected households for the survey. We collected data for six weeks. We did it over the springtime. And in addition to the random sample for the survey results, we had a second phase. And this is a relatively new service that Polico provides. It's called the Open Participation Responses. And that's where we put the survey online and we let anyone in the town or outside the town participate in the survey. And so I'll be going over this evening with you, the randomly selected households, but you'll see in your report, there's a whole section of information and data based on the Open Participation Responses as well. Looking at that sample size, one of the important things is to make sure that it's representative of our community and really reflects the demographics of our community. And so Polico works with us to weight the responses so that we can make sure that the information that we're seeing is representative of our demographics. To give you a sense, we had a 7% response rate when we conducted the survey this spring. 246 residents participated. 7% is pretty good, especially for a community, this is the first time that we've done it. We were very pleased with that participation rate. And then looking at evaluating the results, you'll see information based on the ratings that residents provided, looking at positive responses for excellent or good that were reported for each one of the questions. In addition to standardized questions, we also had an opportunity to add some open-ended questions that gave residents an opportunity to give us some insights into their perspectives and experiences with the town of Garner. These open-ended comments provide an opportunity and give us some context when we look at our results. And so we look at them as a way to better understand and for clarity and they've been included as part of the report as well. Here is the demographics of the survey based on gender, age, race, and Hispanic origin, housing tenure, and housing type. So you'll see, as I mentioned, we work very hard with Polico to make sure that our sample size is representative of our community. Right. So as part of the survey results, we've had a better understanding of ourselves as a community and where we rated on service delivery and where we rated regarding residents' perceptions of issues within the community. But we also have information of our benchmarking, of how we compare to other communities, those 500 communities in town across the country that Polico works with. So it gives us a better understanding of sort of how do we compare in some of these common service areas. So for the benchmarking criteria that you'll see through the report, when you see something as a similar response, that's means that there are positive responses within 10% above or below the benchmark. When something is higher or lower, that means that it's 10 points different from the benchmark. And when something is much higher or much lower, that means it's more than a 20-point difference from the benchmark. As you can see from the chart here, 84% of our results, 106 were similar to the benchmark, something to be very excited about. We had nine that were also higher than the benchmark. As I mentioned, those who participate in the survey are really sort of the best of the best in local government services. And so as we look at the results and look at our areas of similar or higher, I think we should be really proud at the results we're seeing based on other communities across the country as well. The results in the report are grouped by quality of life, governance, and there are 10 facets of livability. So I'm going to spend a few minutes going over each. The first facet is quality of life. As you see here, the highest positive rating, 85% responded that they were very or somewhat likely to remain in Garner for the next five years. The lowest positive rating was 59% rated Garner's overall image or reputation as good or excellent. And from the benchmarking standpoint, all the measures of quality of life met the national benchmarking standard. So you see the charts on the screen there, you can see five of those were similar and the pie chart above gives you a percentage of excellent, good, fair, and poor, sort of how we rated under the quality of life facet. The next facet is governance. The highest positive rating, 80%, rated overall customer service by Garner employees as good or excellent. I will tell you, this is something that I'm particularly proud of. And having worked with this survey for a number of years, I can share with you that 80% is a very high number to get overall good feedback about residents' experience with our staff. And so that's exciting to see. The lowest positive rating, 47% responded that the town is good or excellent and informing residents about issues facing the community. And then looking at the benchmarking, all our measures of governance met the national benchmarking standard as well. Looking at the economy, higher than the benchmark. So areas where we rated higher than the benchmark, look at shopping opportunities, the cost of living in Garner, and the positive impact of economy on the family income. Areas where we were similar to the benchmark in this category, looked at overall economic health of Garner, overall quality of business and service establishments, and Garner as a place to work. Lower than the benchmark indicated Garner was lower than the benchmark as a place to visit and the vibrancy of downtown in our commercial area. And as you can see, the charts next to this area, you can see the similar, higher, and lower.
I have a question on the...
Yes.
The definition that you used in the survey and the interpretation of downtown and/or commercial area. Because a lot of people don't even know we have a downtown. And so what is this definition of commercial area? I read the whole report and so I'm seeing this high rating for shopping opportunities, but then when you dig into the data, what you're seeing is a lot of consternation over the quality of the commerce and shopping opportunities that are there. So it's just like, we have White Oak, there's a shopping opportunity, but when you dig into the data, there doesn't seem to be a lot of satisfaction with the shopping that is here. And so to circle back to my question, that vibrancy of downtown and/or commercial area, that's not just downtown, that's sort of whatever they're interpreting, commercial area to me. Is that right?
That's correct. That is correct. So as residents taking the survey and they respond to this question, it's however they interpret downtown or commercial area, that that's how they're ranking.
That could be McCullers or it could be White Oak.
It could. It could. And that's why, you know, it's important to understand this benchmark in the results, but this would be one of the areas where I'd say we want to do a deeper dive to get a real understanding of what does that mean as we look at the entirety of the town so that we could better look for opportunities for improvement. Looking at mobility, higher than the benchmark, the ease of public parking. Similar to the benchmark, ease of travel by car, quality of snow removal, street lighting, street cleaning, sidewalk maintenance, and other services. Areas where we were lower than the benchmark looked at the overall quality of the transportation system, ease of walking, people who walk or bike instead of driving, and people who carpool instead of driving alone. And then area where we found ourselves much lower than the benchmark was ease of travel by bike in Garner. And so this is the area where, as we're thinking about where are there opportunities for continual improvement, where do we want to focus some time and energy, this might be an area we look at in terms of how does mobility impact quality of life here in our community. Looking at community design, the highest positive rating, 87% rated their neighborhood as a good or excellent place to live. Lowest positive rating, 39% responded that availability of affordable, quality housing is good or excellent. And for the benchmarking standards, all the measures of the community design area met the national benchmark standards. This is going to be important information as we start our work with the Affordable Housing Task Force this week. Looking at utilities, higher than the benchmark, garbage collection, stormwater management, and affordability of high-speed internet. Similar to the benchmark, the overall quality of the utility infrastructure in Garner, water, sewer, stormwater, electric, gas, broadband. So, and this brings up a good point, there's a lot of things in the survey that we may not have direct control over or direct services that we provide, but they do provide opportunity for residents to respond to these areas like affordability of high-speed internet so that we know as a community where there may be opportunities for partnerships if there's a need. So whether it's high-speed internet or water, sewer, electric or gas, those are opportunities where we want to make sure we understand the resident perspective so that we can continue to work with our partners to improve those services. Looking at safety, the highest positive rating, 95% responded that they feel very or somewhat safe in their neighborhood during the day. Safety service ratings, and I will tell you of years and years of doing this survey, that the public safety areas are always the highest rating areas. So 89% rated fire services as excellent or good, 86% rated police services as excellent or good, and 84% rated emergency medical services as excellent or good. Looking at the benchmarking information... Looking at the benchmarking information, safety was listed as a top priority for the town over the next two years, and all the safety ratings were on par with the comparison communities across the country. Natural environment, higher than the benchmark was our recycling services that we provide. Similar to the benchmark, the overall quality of the natural environment, the cleanliness of Garner, air and water resources, yard waste pickup, open space and preservation of natural areas. And you'll see, we had seven that were similar to the benchmark and one that was higher. Parks and recreation, highest positive rating, 84% rated recreation centers as excellent or good, and 83% rated the town's parks as excellent or good. Those are fabulous scores that we should be very proud of. Lowest positive rating, 63% rated availability of paths and walking trails as excellent or good. That's an area where we know we've invested some resources in order to make sure that we have those paths and walking trails available throughout our community, so there's still an opportunity for improvement there with several projects underway now. And looking at benchmarking, all measures of parks and recreation met the national benchmarking standard as well. Health and wellness, the highest positive rating, 75% rated health services as excellent or good in the area. Lowest positive rating, 38% rated availability of affordable, quality mental health care as excellent or good. That's kind of an interesting statistic, as we know that Wake Meds Project to bring the whole person wellness campus to our area will include, a large component will include a mental health hospital and facilities. And looking at the benchmarking, all measures of health and wellness meet the national benchmarking standard as well. Education, arts, and culture. Similar to the benchmark, overall opportunities for education, culture, and the arts, community support for the arts, opportunities to attend cultural arts and music activities, public libraries, and availability of affordable, quality childcare and preschool. Lower than the benchmark, opportunities to attend special events and festivals, K-12 education, and adult educational opportunities. Inclusivity and engagement, higher than the benchmark, attracting people from diverse backgrounds. Similar to the benchmark, Garner is a place to raise children, Garner is a place to retire, residents' connections and engagement with their community, making all residents feel welcome and taking care of vulnerable residents. Lower than the benchmark, opportunities to volunteer. This is also an important information as we continue to review the results of the survey and we determine what the priorities for focus are moving forward. This analysis provided by the survey really gives us an opportunity for us to understand from a resident's perspective, the quality of that service as rated, or that area as rated, and then the importance of that area from a resident's perspective. So for example, looking at the first facet says safety. 89% of those who took the survey, it said, "Safety is important." But the quality of safety services, 70% indicated that we were living up to that level of importance, that need for our community. So as we look sort of down this quality and importance gap analysis, it gives us an opportunity to kind of look from a visual standpoint, where are there opportunities we're going to continue to do great things? Like when I look at parks and recreation, the quality and the importance are right in alignment there, and that's a great thing. But also gives us an opportunity to say, well, where are there opportunities where residents have indicated this is important and we need to continue to work on the quality? And maybe that's areas like mobility or community design. We were also able to add a few custom questions to the survey. I mentioned open-ended questions, but we were also able to do some customized questions specific to the town of Garner. Our first question looked at to what extent residents were satisfied with the spring and fall solid waste pickup services in town. You'll see from the information here, we have very high scores on this with very satisfied and somewhat satisfied. 96%, which we knew that this was a beloved service, an important service in our community, but it's great to be able to get some feedback from our residents, that they think it's just as important as we do. Looking at some additional custom questions that we included in this year's survey was about the source for obtaining information and news about the community or in the community. And so if you look at the information here under the custom question number one, you look at town emails and the town website and social media, that's where people are getting their information about the town and about community events. It's really important for us to know and understand as we continue to work on our community engagement and share with our, share information through our communications department. Also, not only ask where people are getting their information, but it also asks them, where do they prefer to get their information about community event and news? And you'll see that, looking at this chart, social media and email subscriptions are really important. It's interesting, the email subscriptions, the e-notifies that we get through the website continue to be very popular, and residents are indicating that that's important for them to get information straight into their inboxes through their email.
Joe, any questions?
Yes.
In that regard, are we seeing that start to grow more and more? I know we've had that conversation about promoting that the best way we could, different ways to guide people to that so they know exactly what's going on, or automatically notified?
I think we'd have to look at the data analytics more, because the survey was conducted in the spring, so I think before we started, and we do it often, promote the e-subscriptions, but we've been doing it most recently as a way to promote getting information from the town. So I think we would need to look at the email subscriptions, the analytics with that. I will tell you, though, that it continues to be more and more of a popular service and a way of people getting direct information into their inbox. What'll be interesting is a couple of years from now when we do the survey again to see where that number ranks moving forward. All right, so next steps for the survey is that we have published all this information and all these results on the town's website, and I'll show that information to you in just a moment. From a town leadership standpoint, we'll use the information to evaluate current service delivery and inform our department goals. As an organization that's focused on continual improvement and service excellence, having this information really helps us identify things that we're doing well and we need to keep doing, but it also identifies areas where we could be doing better and we should focus our resources and time. The information will also be extremely helpful as we plan for our strategic planning refresh process in FY '25. As council is aware, our strategic plan was last updated back in 2016, and so there's an opportunity to refresh that and use this new information to help guide that process. And then we'll also be providing this information as part of the data in our budget book. And I'll share with council, in all my years of experience in working in local government and doing performance management work, these types of surveys provide the best outcome data that we can have, that really help us understand from a resident's perspective how satisfied they are with services, how concerned they are or pleased they are with issues. And so it's important to have this information and use it appropriately. So as I mentioned, this information has been included live on the town's website. There's information about the survey process itself. If you click here, you get to see a PDF copy of the report, the nice thick report that you have available to you this evening. Also, the presentation, the highlight slides that I went over with council this evening are also provided under the results for overview. But I wanted to take you to this next level. Part of the service that we get as part of being a partner with Polico is not only the survey and the report, but there's an interactive dashboard level of information that we get to use and link to our website. So let me show you what that looks like. This dashboard provides all the information that you see in your report. It breaks it down by the facet areas as well that you see here up top. What I think is really interesting is this interactive dashboard. And let me show you how this works. So for each of these areas, you'll see, based on the questions, and this is looking under governance, and it has each individual question that's provided in the survey, you'll see where we are as far as a positive percentage, where we are in comparison to the benchmark. But if you go down, if you go here to the left, it says facet dropdown. This is the area where you can click on any of the facets that you want to go to. If you go down further here, it gives you the information on the demographic dropdown information, so you can go and look at that, any specific information as part of it as So if you were interested in seeing, let's say, governance, and you were interested in seeing demographic information based on sex, you'll see here, if you go down further, it's going to give you that information for that particular area, those questions based on that demographic. So it gives us a way to really sort of look at the information in a more refined way, in a more in-depth way. This will be available on our website for us to be able to continue to use, for residents also to take a look at, as we continue to evaluate the results and determine how we're going to use them for our strategic purposes and moving forward in the community. So with that being said, that's all I have to reshare with the report this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Questions, comments from council?
It's just a great report, and it's going to be a lot more fun just diving into this in more detail. But I agree with you that it gives us a great sense of direction, where we need to go and things we can maybe do better. And it's interesting how we stack up against the national average. So thank you very much, great presentation.
I would say the same. It's excellent, it's the best one I've ever seen, and it gives us a lot to work with and a lot to direct our citizens to.
Yes, I have questions. So I read all of this already. And starting sort of on page 26, because I'm curious as how we're going to interpret this, as to where we're going to set our own targets and goals. And the way it's structured, it's a lot of, almost similar is satisfactory. And what's interesting when you get into the data and you start to look at the percentile we fall at, even if we're similar, and you have things like overall image and reputation, we're in the 25th percentile. And so they all get weighted when you start doing the main score. And some of them are very high, treat residents fairly, 74%. You know, those are great. Garner is a place to work, 28th percentile. Garner is a place of 13%. Like we're at the bottom of the bottom, and it's, that one says lower. Overall economic health, 37%. Vibrancy of downtown and commercial areas, 16%. So 263 out of 315. Employment opportunities, 29. And then we jump up to opportunities of 73 and 93 for cost of living. So I think digging down into these, I think there's a danger in looking at this to say we're similar. Well, similar doesn't even necessarily mean good, it means we're comparable. But some of the numbers around, like if you go to community design, page 30, and we're similar, well-planned commercial growth, well, even in our comparable communities, you've only got 55% of people saying it's excellent or good, which means half of people think it's fair or poor. And so do we say, well, we're good enough, we're as good as Chapel Hill or whatever? And then when you dig down even further, so quality of new development in Garner, 42nd percentile, overall appearance, 27, land use planning and zoning, 34. So I want to be, some of the overarching numbers look really good, or, and they are, but they're masking some of these things, I think, that we've realized intuitively, particularly around creating spaces for people. So community, you have to have places, places plus people equals community. And when you start to read the open-ended comments from both the random survey and the open-ended, they're all very similar in the sense that we don't have restaurants to go to, we don't have places to shop that are close. And so there are these themes around small business, local commercial, that are emerging in sort of the more qualitative data. And in the quantitative data, if you kind of look at it from the percentile perspective, the other example in 33, some of the things that really jumped out, I had a quick conversation with Gray this afternoon that came up, was sort of this lack of opportunity for events and activities and things for different age groups kind of creeps out when you start looking at the written stuff, but like opportunities to participate in social events and activities. We're similar, but we're in that 22nd percentile. So, and then in arts and education, it's very similar numbers, education, culture, arts, 27th percentile, music activities, 33, community support for the arts, 24. And even though the overarching is similar, the other one is kind of jumps out as something we've always kind of heard and known, but it's interesting to see the perspective of survey participants is education. And the K-12, which we don't know at our schools, but they are kids. And that's troubling. And then adult education opportunities, and so seeing kind of gaps in the social fabric, and that goes back to creating commercial spaces where people can gather, where people can host events, or get a dinner, or go someplace after going to the park. People have to have these places to congregate. That requires commercial zoning. And then I can talk later about it, but when you start getting into page 37, you really start to see where your fair and pores group together. And I kind of highlighted in my mind, anything sort of near 45% that's poor to fair is something we really need to pay attention to, as something the public has identified as a very strong weakness for us. I can send you my highlighted copy. But it's just interesting how some of that stuff comes out, even on the transportation, the mobility, it's like, I think some of that's weighted in a very weird way around carpooling. I'm not quite sure if we oversampled people who carpool, but they were pretty disgruntled about how carpooling is in Garner. But it's trying to see that stuff, and also trying to localize that stuff around different, maybe different parts of Garner, having different challenges or experiences, because I think that's the other thing we realize, is we've got different Garners now, and those experiences and opportunities and amenities are different depending on where you are. So I'd like to have some more conversation at a different time about how we're going to create goals based on the data to make sure we're not sort of being complacent with being average, to put it kind of frankly. Because I mean, some of the stuff, we're outstanding. I mean, we really are, even amongst some of these great peer communities, and we should have the same sort of desire to be that exemplary all across the board. You can't do it overnight, sign up for a pound of money, and all this other stuff. But if we're going to take pride in our high-rating things, we need to own the lower-rating things too.
And Mr. Dillinger, I would agree. I think the reason that, for the first overview for this process, I presented it the way I did was because this is kind of our benchmark, this is the first year of data that we have. But to your point, there's a deeper dive into this data that we need to look into. Being similar is good when you compare to the other, you know, Gold Star communities that are essentially part of the survey, but that might not be good enough for us. And what does that look like for, as we think about who we want to become as a community and where our priorities and investments should be? So another level of analysis on this work is to do that deeper dive that you just sort of highlighted for us, is to really go through and look at the data points, look at the percentages, look at where, you know, even similar, we're really strong and very high, but there are areas where we're similar and the scores are low. And what sort of focus should we have on those areas? In some cases, it may not be a whole lot of focus, because it may not be something we prioritize as a community, but we don't know that until we do this deeper review of the data and start doing that level of analysis that then helps us sort of bring to the surface. that then helps us sort of bring to the surface those areas where we can have discussions about where our goals and resources should go based on our vision for the community. So I think our thinking is right in alignment there.
Yep, thank you.
I would say a very good start, as you mentioned. We'll not repeat everything that's been said here, but with establishing that foundation, that benchmark for us, and as you mentioned, this information can inform the development of the update of the future strategic plan. And in the area of mobility and transportation, and particularly is looking at that, as Mr. Dillinger has mentioned, I would like to highlight also as well that there are areas that we were lower in the benchmark, and looking at those areas that we're lower could also help inform our, the revision of our future transportation plan. So I would say this is good information for us to look at ourselves, and then to revise our current plans and make things better.
I haven't had a chance since we get, you know I'm going to say something. The juicy stuff starts on page 117, read the responses. I'm serious. The survey stuff is signed, but it's, I hate to say it's generic, but it's generic. It doesn't give you details. There is so much that people wrote that is, I think, good stuff. Some of it's good stuff, some of it I wonder where they've been, how long they've been, where they've been. They make comments about a couple of things. But anyway, it's mentioned over and over and again. I told Mr. Dillinger, we were talking on the phone today, I said there were five things, I've got six or seven now, that's mentioned over and over. Communication is one. We didn't know about this, we didn't know about that. We've got a good communication department, we can do better, you know, getting things out. One was opportunities to volunteer, that was mentioned over and over. All the things that we've got in town to volunteer, and I know the town doesn't promote some of these things, but I'm going to send you one tonight to everybody that I hope might consider working on. It's going to be the Back to School Bash, that has over 800 kids signed, but man, 500 parents. When you look at the number of people, you take out our holiday events and food, something involving food, that's one of the biggest events in town. And there's over 125 people signed up to volunteer, they need 200. But anyway, that's just, there's opportunities to volunteer at Community of Hope, at Garner Ministries, at so many civic groups, there's so many out there, and I don't know how people aren't all aware of them, but they, and I know that, you know, maybe they don't want, we have an optimist's club, or the civic town club, or whatever. Things to promote that. Local events and restaurants, locally owned businesses, which is a challenge. I mean, we're seeing that in downtown Raleigh, we're seeing it downtown Durham, where it's a challenge for some of them to stay in business now, they've gone up. Weekend, weekend activity has changed. You hear a lot of these people who own restaurants now, they don't have the clientele that they had, the number of people. It's changed quite a bit. Green space, trees, canopy, open space, that's mentioned over and over and over. Connectivity sidewalks, we're talking about the bicycles. That's, if you look at the bicycles, that's what Mr. Miller was mentioning earlier, that's one of the worst things we're rated on is, I mean, we're like 350 out of 370, that's pretty bad. And that's just what it is. Talk about connectivity, connect existing sidewalks, older neighborhoods, different things that we've all heard about, was mentioned. Special events and festivals is mentioned over and over and over. And, you know, if you think about what we do, most of our special events and festivals are tied to a holiday, excluding the food-related ones downtown. And they talked about this, they talked about that. Things we've done in the past, you've had Beach Music Festival, you've had this, you've had that. Years ago, we used to have the Pinecone Series out at Lake Benson Park, but it was at four o'clock in the afternoon on Saturday or Sunday in the summer. Four o'clock on Saturday or summer in August and July and June. It's not a very comfortable place to be sometimes. But they also mentioned using other places other than downtown, using the parks, or whatever. One said have more food truck rodeos, and the comment underneath it said, have less food truck rodeos. It's in here. So it's different ways, the way people look at things. So one person said, we've got too many houses with final siding in Garner. I was like, I know we went through a little stretch there, but nothing has even got close in the last two years. And it makes a tardy flank, and that's what is almost everything built in Garner, whether it's single-family, detached, attached, whatever. So it's really interesting reading the details of what people really think. You know, talks about public transportation, it just talks about so many things. Old grocery stores also is a hot one, we all know about that. But a chance for another opportunity to shop at a different type of grocery store. So the details are interesting in how to approach them. It'll take some time, and it's important for staff, I mean, staff's already seen this and still digesting it, so it's a lot to take in. I don't say it's the juicy stuff, but it's, some people tell you what they think. And some people don't like us. I mean, if you look at the governance, we're at 48%. And, you know, I mean, Congress right now is like 25%, so at least we're not that low. But we are below half of what people rate. So just, you know, you take that and consider what people think of us and some of the things that we're doing. You know, so don't care for it. So, and I know it's 246 people, whatever, and that's 7%. And according to what Ms. Miller said, that's not a bad response for the first time, so. But that's 246 people who took the time to respond, which is good. So you're hearing from, if you read it, you're obviously hearing from people who've lived here a long time, and some people who haven't been here that long, and some of the comments they make, which is good. That's why I've written when they talk about communication, the town can only do so much as far as getting information out there, but maybe there's things we need to do about communicating with others, the volunteer groups and those things, and they need to be on our social media and our email. Maybe the email needs to go out once a week, maybe there needs to be a postal social media every single day about something. Need to see, and you still, you know, even though we do that, people aren't satisfied. So it's a lot of really good information. Affordable housing is interesting in here. In reading some of the comments, some people said what I said at our budget meeting. They said you should only be trying to get two dice a houses in Garner right now. Affordable and the most expensive, single-family detached. And I didn't know what to me, I did not answer the survey. So I was like, wow, this person read my mind. Because they said, one person said, don't approve projects based on the cost of this and the cost of that. Send here, just read that, I can't find it right now. It's just really interesting, their thought. Affordable and low-income housing is mentioned quite a bit. Housing, more accessible housing, and more of a market-driven market, we know that. But anyway, it's mentioned in here over and over also, so. I would encourage you to read that, and you have to read it three or four times to take it in. I've only read it really good once. So it's very interesting. But I do appreciate the information, and this gives us a baseline where to start, based off what they said. You said we're going to do it again in another year or two years?
Typically, communities do it every two to three years, because you need to give yourself enough time to look at the report, create strategies, work on implementing the strategies, and then be able to evaluate them again. So every two to three years is typically how often most communities do it. And so we would be looking at doing that the next couple of years.
One other interesting one is, talk about more trails, zip line, and also parks and more spaces. And our entire fields are like, I reckon they don't know about Yurgen Park. I mean, everything is it, I sit there and rent a something, this is Yurgen Park, maybe they're not aware of it. That's why I say it may be someone who's not lived here that long, is not aware that that is on the horizon. But, you know, some of the things are being planned for. Transportation, it's just no magic wand to make it better.
Mr. Singleton, I agree with you. The additional open-ended comments really give you a context for some of the data points, the survey points. And it's really important for us to review them and understand them in terms of what our residents are telling us, what, you know, we need to improve on, areas where we're strong, things that they want to see. You brought up the issue of additional communication. That's always going to be an ongoing opportunity and challenge for any local government. You know, that's why we included some of our custom questions to get a really good sense of, when people say they're getting their information from us, where are they getting it? And then, more importantly, where do they want to get it? And so that's a place where we can continue to build on our strategies, work with our local nonprofit groups, and look at volunteer opportunities from a staff level. We thought that was kind of surprising, too, to see that we were lower than the benchmark. I wonder how much of that has to do with sort of the aftereffect of the pandemic? And, you know, people have really stopped volunteering a lot of places for health reasons, and, you know, is there an opportunity to be good partners and let people know about all the volunteer opportunities in town? And how do we partner with them to do that? Having this kind of information helps us better understand that and then develop strategies so that we can continue to build and improve. So I think everything you said is spot on as far as taking this information, looking at not only the data points, but also taking it and looking in terms of the comments that were included to give us a fuller picture about what residents are thinking about services and issues in the community.
Any other questions or comments?
A quick dovetail on the sort of, going back to spaces. Because when I was looking over this while Gray was talking, and there was all this desire for people to come together in places, whether it's a festival, or a concert, or a market, or... And I was thinking, other than downtown, where are the places that you would even do a food truck rodeo?
We can do it at Lake Benson Park, we can do it on July 3rd.
Well, I mean, in Lake Benson, right, like, where are the places, people, if I want to have an event in Garner, where are the places I can do that? And there aren't many. And it just goes back to, you know, feeding into that, too, that destination element of where we scored so low. You've got to create places people want to go. Whether it's to shop or hang out, you have to prioritize. As much as we talk about preserving open space and trees and tree canopy, you have to preserve places and opportunities for people to go places, not just live places. Otherwise, they got to go somewhere else. And there's a lot of comments when you read through that, they say, well, I don't want to have to go to O'Reilly or whatever to do X, Y, or Z. I want to be local, I want to stay in Garner. So just, it's interesting how that feeds into sort of our broader, I guess we'll talk about it, economic development strategies of what are we trying to attract? And I didn't see one mention of, we need more flex space in Garner. Not something the public care, now from a tax-based perspective, they care. But from an amenities and community standpoint, it's not a priority. So it's just finding a way in the short term to be hyper-conscious about our land use. And that feeds directly, again, into this cost of services and all that other stuff that's going on in parallel, because they're not making any more land.
And you mentioned about where to have it, a few comments in here is the importance of the open space behind the rec center. About more movies, more festivals down there, that was mentioned, how important that green space down there is. And, you know, it's a place where you can gather, take kids, families, it's just a, you know, I think it's more, much, a more intimate setting there with the nighttime movies, because it's smaller than Lake Benson Park. And so that all makes sense, that's why it's important to carve out areas. As it's mentioned here, in some neighborhoods, there's no places for anybody to play. Wow. Wow, that's a shock, because we didn't press for it hard enough, and now we're trying to press, and we're getting some response from developers and some don't. But anyway, that is mentioned in here of having open space in neighborhoods where people can gather. Whether they're gathering, or playing, or whatever, they're doing something. Just a big open space, and so open, an open meadow. So anyway, it's mentioned in here again. But again, touching on the rec center and how that's used, it was, there were a lot of good comments on that and the law behind it, and how that's so important.
And I think it'll be interesting when we conduct the survey again, because we do have so many projects in the works, especially related to parks and recreation and connectivity, if we see any improvement as far as residents' perceptions and use of those services. So, as I mentioned, this is a good place to start with some baseline information for us, but it will be even more interesting in a few years to see where we start trending as far as some information and ratings.
Excellent observation. I'd just like to add, to reinforce what everything has already been said up here. I consider this a huge success, because it's already making us talk about. Talking about communication, this is another way to get communication from the residents among ourselves. So it's a success already. We're not going to finish talking about this tonight, this is the start of talking about this. It's a good starting point for many months, years to come. Thanks for doing this, thanks for helping interpret it. Thank everyone for reading it and picking out your favorite parts that reinforces what you already suspected, or perhaps it opened your eyes to something you'd never thought about. So I consider this very successful already. And thank you Town Manager Miller for his leadership in putting this together, helping us to interpret it, and helping us to use this as a tool to make Garner a better place for all of us. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I also would like to recognize our Communications Director, Rick Mercer. Rick was my partner in getting this work done, working with the Polico team to make sure that we were getting information shared in the community, that we were getting enough people to participate in the survey. He's helped put the information online. So couldn't have done this without his support and effort, and just want to publicly acknowledge him for that. But I also want to say thank you to the council for allowing us to do this work, for allowing us to participate in the survey. It can be a big risk to do community surveys, but I'm a firm believer in that we don't know where there are opportunities for improvement or opportunities to continue to grow if we don't know where we're starting from and what our residents really think and feel about services and issues in our community. And so I just want to say thank you for your support, for allowing us to do this. I think it's going to be a really important tool for the town as we continue to think about priorities, as we continue to think about resource investment, and as we continue to make growth decisions. So thank you for your support, and look forward to using this information to make our community an even better place to live and work.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation, excellent discussion starter, more communication and more directions. Thanks to everyone involved. And now, item three on the agenda, the UDO text amendment discussion. And I've just got to give the briefest preface here before turning it over to our Planning Director and our Economic Development Director. UDO, Uniform Development Ordinance, okay? That sounds pretty technical already, you know, and text amendment, we're down in the weeds on this thing. But then we look in here, we got economic developments. So what's the correlation? And this will soon be revealed. What's the correlation between all this building code type, scientific, do this and can't do that, and economic development? Well, more than meets the eye, and we are about to have the answer revealed for us here. And let's start with Mr. Trezenberg, our Planning Director, to give us a little overview and to give us the kind of recap of how we ended up with this little part of it here in our work session versus what we did at our last council meeting as well.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Tonight, we have back before you the parts of the First Amendment package aimed at implementing some things in the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan. You adopted a good chunk of this at your last regular meeting, but there were a few things that we wanted to have a little more discussion about. So I've kind of reorganized what's left to hopefully give you a way to kind of break this down tonight and see if there's anything else that you're comfortable with approving. And potentially also, maybe there's just some things that we need to defer to the next package. And in that vein, you know, just thinking about the packages and how often we do those, you know, based on this, again, this had quite a bit in it. But I think it's fairly reasonable to expect that, you know, a text amendment package takes about six months once we get it to you. So we can look at potentially doing, you know, two of these a year if we want to. So just have that kind of timeframe in mind for anything that we might choose to delay for the next batch. So just a reminder again there of the timeline. Most recently, again, July 15th, we did approve a portion of this package. And so we have some remaining amendments for consideration. The first batch that I kind of wanted to highlight are those related to residential uses. So we had some amendments, and admittedly, these were probably the last things that made it into the previous package. So I do kind of ask the question at the end of this slide, do we defer these then to the next, the next package? But we are trying to see if we can clarify those townhouse and multifamily uses more appropriately to how the comp plan envisions them now. And assigning those uses to more appropriate zoning districts. We have to keep in mind, we rewrote the UDO first. So the UDO rewrite did not anticipate everything that was going to come out of the comp plan. And we see some subtle differences as it relates to townhouses and multifamily. So that's one item. Another item that came up towards the end was some of these ideas about Upper Story Residential and how it relates to the MFB district, which is our more dense multifamily zoning district, and how we might also encourage... and how we might also encourage more vertical mixed use. And to accomplish that, there's not a lot in the MFB district currently except for residential uses. You, you can't have the supporting office and commercial in that district, it has to be in a separate district. And then, of course, there's also part of the SUP exemption there, we, we also discussed an exemption for upper story residential use.
Yeah, a question on the MFB, so there was sort of a conversation around having that MFB and then also carving out for CMX. And so CMX could accommodate this upper story residential. So I guess when you're getting applications or you're having inquiries, what's sort of the friction between deciding to go CMX versus multifamily with, you know, and adding a commercial in there somehow, what sort of?
It, it really comes down to the way the comprehensive plan divvies up the intensity of change and the number of stories that goes with that. So CMX handles the low rise very well, and the AC district handles the high rise very well. But it's that mid-rise that's really the piece that doesn't have a district that works. So we were thinking about trying to work the MFB to, to fit that, because it seems like it wants to. Because of, we are trying to focus it more on those denser apartments. And that might be something we can continue to look at over the next few months if we do defer this to the next package. Maybe there's something about that that also fits in with a potential exemption if we want to try to incentivize that, that maybe there's some kind of cap that's related to that. Because I, you know, we've heard the concern about exempting too many and not just having this unlimited exemption for those. So maybe we can look at targeting that a little more towards that mid-rise specifically, since that's the gap we're trying to fill.
So kind of looking in hindsight to some things we've approved, the Swift Creek Apartments, where we, the, the projects on 401, we've had commercial on the front. And that's sort of come after the fact, or barely was in the conversation very early. In sort of hindsight, is that sort of? Would there have been a preference to do retail on the bottom as a, you know, and again, it came in at a completely different era, almost, right? But if those were to come in now, the one across where Farm Road, is that what it's called, 401 Old Stage Intersection?
The, uh, the one that we denied or the one that we approved?
Oh, we approved it, it's next to.
Vintage Garner?
Vintage Garner.
Yeah.
But that came in today, and we said, well, you, and they just wanted apartments at first, and we're like, we can do some commercial.
Right.
Would they then sort of be looking at a way, well, we'd rather have a portion of this upper story residential, right, retail below, because now they're kind of Frankensteined in between by just doing a commercial in the front.
Right.
What, what's sort of the change in what people are trying to bring, or is there, is there not, or?
We definitely have some folks who are beginning to talk about that vertical mixed use and putting the commercial on the ground floor. Again, primarily along the major, major corridors. But, but there still is that horizontal preference for, I think, for the horizontal mix.
Instead of carving out a CMX, it would be just multifamily with an included commercial component?
Right, right.
Question on that.
Uh huh.
You have a valid point, you know, the, uh, as we run around, look at developments, and it's all over the gamut, depending on where you go, but, you know, on the major thoroughfare, where you really want to get a certain amount of commercial activity. But as you go into it, there's places where, again, the vertical, the businesses down below and the apartments and/or townhomes above it, is, is there a situation in here where you could actually have both on a project? Main 401 or 50 or whatever major road would be, that front could be commercial as part of that development. Then as you go in depth on that development, be it ground level, then residential above. So actually, can, could we do both?
You, I mean, you, you certainly could, it takes the right site.
Yeah, with the right side, of course.
Yeah. Yeah, you certainly could.
So Mr. Massey, I think another way to answer that would be, what Jeff's proposing in this text amendment would allow, would be more helpful to eventually get that. So that's part of the reason for bringing this proposed change forward, is right now, we don't have a very explicit way in our code to do it that aligns with the comp plan. And so whether we, we continue to, you know, move this one forward now or in a subsequent package, I think part of that goal is to make sure that we have the tools in place that should the market align such that that kind of development would be appropriate here, we've got the right mix of comp plan and UDO to accommodate it.
Because the other thing that has sort of happened too, when you look at the way our comp plan or land use is broken up, they have a large portion of it is called neighborhoods. But even in that subset, it accounts for the possibility of having some neighborhood level commercial. And, but on the surface, it just looks like you, you need, you only have to do housing. But this sort of change would, again, MFB very specifically, but would sort of encourage or allow without an additional. I, I, I see where it's going, and it does connect with the comp plan better to the UDO, well, the future proposed UDO.
Yeah.
Example.
I, I think we could certainly, we could certainly benefit from, like I say, potentially deferring this and taking a more holistic look at the mix of use from the very small, from like live-work units in that neighborhood kind of corner store. All aspects of both the horizontal and the vertical. This admittedly was a, was a quick change when we started talking about trying to better identify what was appropriate in MFA and MFB, but it kind of, it does go beyond just that. So if you prefer for us to take a more holistic look at it from the very small to the very large, we're certainly open to doing that.
I think we need to certainly think down the road as we see what's coming and next year can be even a bigger and stronger year with things coming to us, whether it's commercial or residential or a combination as we're talking about here. I'd hate to see our hands tied on anything, we can think outside the box and be prepared. I'd rather be proactive than reactive. But at the same time, you know, we want to, that, we need to be able to adjust for what development, it might be a, a small thing like on Timber Drive, or it could be something major that would come in. So I think, is that what I'm hearing staff say, is we need to have that kind of flexibility, or?
Well, I, I think for the, the projects that are a mix of residential and commercial, so Jeff has, Jeff has sectioned, separated these out, and so all he's talked about so far tonight are just the portions of the text amendment that had to do with a residential component. What he'll move to in a moment are the things that are strictly commercial, they're not, no residential component. And we really would like to have discussion about the ability to move those forward, because we do have things before us that are awaiting our outcome of that. We do believe there's a little more time to go back on these that have a residential or residential-commercial blend and possibly restructure the way that they were presented and, and take into consideration some of the things that have been said and that we've heard tonight. So, so I think we're, we're comfortable if that's the direction council wants us to go, own the, the items that included residential. But as we trend, as Jeff progresses on in his presentation, we would, we'd like to have whatever conversation we could tonight about the commercial-only portions and see if there's a way to move those forward now.
Got you, okay.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much, John, for putting that in perspective, and I want to reinforce what Jeff said about taking a holistic approach. And also to focus on the fact that we, we may have started at one end and we could have started at the other end, the commercial. Perhaps in some ways it's more pressing, we have some things out there. There could be some more consensus on that end versus this end. Saying all that to say this, don't let me make the same mistake we made at a previous meeting when we had somebody, same gentleman there, and we talked amongst ourselves until the last five minutes, and we missed an opportunity to hear from our out-of-town guests. So with holistic approach in mind and, and taking the big picture of economic development, maybe we hold some of these detailed questions until we get the bigger picture and then kind of work backwards. So back to you, Jeff.
Okay.
Sure. Talk about these buildings, MST, MFA. One of the prime potential development areas is going to be one of those repatriations that comes from both south stations. But that's not, you know, done in a way that promotes both residential and some type of business, retail, whatever it may be. And that's the perfect opportunity to, to revitalize an area, to serve the people coming with the bus, but also other uses around it, not just, not just because the bus.
Right.
But the bus is going to be making regular stops. And so that is, that's, that's the one to me that's got the red lights flashing, it's like, this is where the prime space, you're on a big highway, access is easier, or should be easier. But anyway, that, that's the place, to me, one of the biggest places that we know, that we know is going to, will need to change and have a rebirth once that starts working out there, that whole area is going to have to be evaluated by the property owners.
Yep.
Excellent example. Back to you, Jeff.
Um, on the non-residential side, um.
Did you skip over the? SUP exemption for upper story residential piece?
Uh, yeah, I'd mentioned that briefly.
So is that just included in, because I know we talked about it last week, so it's sort of like, you want to punt that? Or you're recommending to punt that, or you're?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's kind of tied into that whole MFB discussion with the, the vertical mixed use. So again, I don't think it's pressing at this point in time that we can consider that one with that whole, that whole mix of use discussion, yeah. Because I think what I was saying is there might be a way to address some of the concerns that had been raised about not having a, a ceiling for that exemption potentially, to target that in with the, the comp plan kind of mid-rise focus, yeah.
Thank you.
Uh huh. For the non-residential use related, those items remaining, probably one of the biggest was the idea of adding the research and development use as a separate use, removing it from the other light industrial category and making it its own use, and establishing some necessary standards like minimum parking and allowing that in the CMXLI and HI districts. So that's kind of one. The second was the discussion about whether or not to add certain specific uses to the Activity Center zoning district. During the, during the little two-on-ones, and in some cases, I think it might have been a one-on-one kind of discussion with some developers, there was talk about whether or not hospitals and ambulatory health facilities should be included in the Activity Center district. And then we also identified that banks or financial institutions with drive-through or vehicular ATMs, those might be on, on the bottom floor of a, an Activity Center-type development, and should those also be approved and not just walk-in only? And then the bigger piece is the discussion of the SUP exemptions. But any questions on these two generally?
The, the banks and the financial one, would that include standalone banks? Or would it have to be integrated into a larger structure? Because that's sort of was my thought, was you have an activity center where you want density, and then you're going to plop a, a bank down on the edge of it and all this parking and stuff.
Right. It, it wouldn't have to be, I mean, it could be separate unless we established an additional standard, much like we've been thinking about with the upper story residential, that it has to be part of a vertically mixed-use building.
Be my preference, but.
Yeah.
It is what it is. Plop a bank down.
Plop a bank down.
Right. Let's see. I know, and I do know that there was some sense of urgency, I think, or maybe some sense of whether or not in light of the hospital proposal coming up, that that needed to be in the AC district. I don't think that's the case anymore. So again, if that's something you're not comfortable with completely tonight, I don't know that that's really the issue that is most pressing related to the hospital, it has more to do, I think, with the exemptions. So just to recap, I, I did kind of want to put all the exemptions on one slide so we could come back to this and refer to it, and I numbered them just so we could make sure that we were all talking about the same thing. So I do have repeated the upper story residential, but again, suggesting that that may be deferred as part of the next package. The second exemption that was in the proposal was for those buildings being able to exceed the standard maximum height in the CMX district, where we already have an objective standard in place for how that is accomplished. You're just adding an SUP onto it, but the formula is already there. So staff feels pretty comfortable with that one. Then we had three exemptions for specific uses, no matter what district they would be permitted in. These would be the research and development use, the new one, hospitals, and the ambulatory health and emergency care facilities. So again, those three uses regardless of what district they're in. The fourth proposed SUP exemption change was for non-residential or mixed-use development to change the threshold from a thousand square feet per development to a hundred thousand square feet in a building. And the language for that is kind of combined with number five, which then is that for non-residential and mixed-use development, the threshold could further be changed from a hundred thousand square feet per development to two hundred and fifty thousand square feet for a building if that development is either in the AC district, which again, does not exist anywhere today. It would have to be a project that would be rezoned to AC. And development on a tract that's annexed as part of maybe a tier-one zoning, but you have not yet seen a site-specific development plan, so an actual site plan.
There's a, a question on the definition of mixed use in both of those. So you have non-residential, that's very clear what that is. Then we have mixed-use development in four and five. In, in our UDO, we have what the neighborhood mixed use and the CMX.
Right.
And those aren't residential at all. But we sort of use mixed use in a very generic. When we say mixed use, I think we're talking about a mix of retail and commercial. And so my question is, what is the definition of mixed-use development for this, these exemptions?
Right. So for purposes of these exemptions, it would be any non-residential project that includes a residential component or a mix of just non-residential, which would kind of by default still be non-residential. So primarily, it's just any project that would include both a residential component and a non-residential.
Yeah, and I think there, that's where some of this confusion is, because in the UDO, when you have in 5.9, non-residential and mixed, mixed-use district standards, the word mixed use is used for neighborhood mix, the downtown, traditional business district, CMX, AC, light industrial, heavy industrial. So this is where there's, there's conflict in our own UDO with defining what mixed use is, because I, I don't. Maybe it's in there somewhere, we're defining mixed use as being that, but it's also defined as a mixed-use district as this. And so I just want to be clear that non-residential and then residential-commercial-combination-mixed-use.
Right.
And.
Yeah, so.
That ends up being maybe mostly a residential project.
Right.
Where it's sort of seemingly on the surface geared, geared towards commercial. So.
Yeah. So we had to, we had to have a way to classify projects that included both residential and non-residential. So when we use mixed-use development, that's what that's referring to, is any project that has both a use from the residential side and the non-residential side. And then we happen to have. And then we happen to have zoning districts which also have mixed use in their name, which is just an indicator that those districts are where you'll most likely find the ability to do those kinds of development because both residential and non-residential uses are permitted.
So.
Does that help?
Yeah. So what? The scenario, let's say, uh, I want to build this hundred-square-foot building over here. Or, you know, less or, you know, or a little more and say, and then I also want to do a few townhomes over here in the corner. All of a sudden I'm a mixed-use development, even if I'm ninety percent, something completely different.
Right.
And again, our sort of expectation of mixed use is something more in-integrated where you're not doing light industrial on the same side as residential. And note that it captures that.
Uh, these are very, very important questions and issues, but I would ask again, let's try to start at the top with the big holistic approach that we have special guests from out of town here about. Cause I have been told in no uncertain terms, we will have a break at eight o'clock. I learned last time, I tried to speak through it. So I, I, I want to be courteous to our presenters. We're not being asked to make a decision tonight. We're gathering information. We have many more days before it comes back to council for action. So let's, let's get some information exchange and then we'll drill into, uh, other very important issues.
Yeah.
A little later in, in the day or in the week. Thank you.
Yeah, but if there, if there's, if there's very specific scenarios you'd like us to run through to give you how that would apply or not apply, I'm very happy to do that. Um, to segue into Nate's part of the presentation, um, I did, this was kind of a joint effort. Um, we did look at our neighbors', uh, UDOs to see specifically, I wanted to look at whether or not SUPs are being required for, um, single and multifamily residential because we've had a lot of discussion about that in the past. Um, and then more specifically related to Nate's part of the presentation about the manufacturing and true industrial. So not utilities, not salvage yards and things like that. Um, and so you see here just kind of a summary of who's requiring SUPs in what cases. Um, and so I'll just kind of let that speak for itself. And if you have any questions on that, um, you see there where it says BOA or TC behind the jurisdiction. That means, that's just an indicator of whether their council or their board of adjustment is doing the special use permits. Um, just in case you were interested in that as well. Um, so with that, I'll be happy to allow Nate to come up and give his part of the presentation. And I'll be on by standby for any questions.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, there we go. So, uh, Mayor Council members really appreciate your time tonight. Um, I also wanted to be sure to, uh, introduce Michael Haley, uh, with Wake County Economic Development, Executive Director, uh, Wake County Economic Development, a program of the Raleigh Chamber of Commerce. I'm always required to say that whenever I'm introducing Michael. So appreciate his time here tonight. Uh, they're a great partner of ours and I could not do what I do every day without the support and partnership of Wake County. So really appreciate Michael being here. So maybe kind of, uh, I appreciate you helping me make my kind of opening statement earlier when you were talking about, all right, Jeff's up here talking about zoning text amendments. And then why is economic development up here? Well, it's all connected, so that's why I'm up here. Um, you know, provide a kind of quick overview of kind of where we were, where we are and where we hope to go. So here's the outline. So we're going to run through very quickly, uh, all the new commercial industrial product that's been developed over the last four years, just so that everyone can get a sense of that scale and kind of where we sit. And then a kind of local market overview as it relates to kind of commercial and industrial development. Then we're going to move on to the site selection process, just so that you can have a better idea of kind of truly how competitive and kind of how that process works. Uh, and then Michael will join us to talk about competitive competitiveness from Wake County, uh, as we compete in the region and globally. So Beacon Commerce Park, I know it's a park that y'all are very familiar with, right there on Jones Sausage Road. So, uh, six hundred thousand total square feet, uh, flex-based use. And the, uh, the takeaway on this is right now we only have twenty-seven thousand square feet remaining. So, uh, as I'm getting requests for information in from Wake County, uh, for existing buildings, uh, right now I could only submit on them, uh, if they had one that came in, you know, at twenty-seven thousand square feet or less. Uh, so that, that's a good thing, but on the other side of that coin, it's also a bad thing because we're missing out on some opportunities. So Greenfield 27, again, I think last time I spoke to you a couple of months ago, these buildings were available and ready to be leased. Well, the good news is, uh, now they're all sold and the good news is they're a hundred percent leased. Uh, the other side of that coin is since they're a hundred percent leased, I don't have that product to, to offer anymore. So, and that's very important because the building that the Wake County ABC Board purchased, uh, at a hundred and sixty thousand square feet was our largest product that we had. So, uh, anytime again that I receive an RFI, if we had a RFI for something needed, you know, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand square feet, that was usually the, the facility getting, uh, submitted for that. So now that those gone, you know, now that that's gone, don't have that opportunity. Uh, Garner Commerce Center 70, we're really glad this came online a couple of months ago. Uh, all three of these buildings are available. So right now, uh, we're looking for opportunity. I'm looking to see if the requirement meets the square footage, uh, cause this is kind of our sweet spot right now as far as it relates to a product offering. So, and you can see that a hundred and twenty-eight thousand total square feet divided up on those three buildings. And then Garner Business Park 70, uh, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand square feet, all one hundred percent leased. Uh, we're anxiously waiting on building five to get, uh, CO'd so we can get that product to market. And then moving along to North Greenfield Parkway, uh, you can see there two hundred and forty-eight thousand square feet and a hundred percent leased. And then moving along to Lawrence Field Court, uh, one building, ninety-eight thousand square feet, again, one hundred percent leased. And last but certainly not least, thirty-three hundred Waterfield Drive, uh, one building, a hundred percent leased. So you're probably wondering, uh, what the total square footage, I hope you're wondering what the total square footage of all those buildings is. So comes right in at two point six million square feet, uh, that we've added since 2020. Uh, that's a nice, nice big number. Uh, when you subtract that, the small number that we're kind of left over with is a hundred and fifty-five thousand square feet over four buildings, uh, available for, for product submission. So, uh, as I mentioned earlier, uh, what that means is the, the request for information that we're getting from Wake County, I can only submit, uh, uh, you know, for those opportunities if the requirement meets our product. So it's not that I can't submit or Michael won't let me submit. It's truly, if we don't have the product to offer, uh, that's an opportunity passing us by there. So, uh, and I know Michael will speak to this later, but the majority of, uh, building searches uh, are north of a hundred thousand square feet now, just based on the type of companies that are looking. Uh, and I know you've heard me say this before and I'll say it again, it's the oldest cliche in economic development. Michael will probably say it a couple of times, but if, uh, no product equals no project. So you can't sell from an empty cart. Um, as soon as you can kind of see our, our cart, uh, has kind of been, uh, diminished a little bit over the last four years that these buildings have come in on, but there's good news with that, with the, uh, the lease rate there. So moving on to the local market overview. So the strengths, I think we all know this, North Carolina is growing. Uh, we sit in a very well-known region, uh, which leads to, you know, healthy commercial real estate market here in the region, uh, which, you know, promotes strong interests. And to me, the most important thing is the confidence here in the local market. As I'm meeting with economic developers throughout the state and different parts of the state. Uh, this is not the case in every community in North Carolina. Uh, I know economic developers by name that, you know, they're telling me their vacancy rate, you know, sixty percent, fifty percent. They're dealing with population leaving. We have population growth. So when I'm talking with those friends of mine, I always think, okay, whose problem would I rather have? I'd rather have our problem. Uh, and then going back to the strengths, uh, highway access being one of those. So our challenges, like I mentioned before, uh, the need is there for larger facilities due to the larger project sizes of the companies that are looking for new locations. Uh, speed to market is essential with that. Uh, the companies, I know a lot of the projects I worked at the state, um, you know, they would give you sometimes what seemed like unrealistic timelines. Um, but that was because they had pressure on them to pick the new location and get the facility up and running to get the product out to market. Uh, one of the other challenges too is that the easy land has already been taken. So the good land that's got the infrastructure that maybe was a little bit lower cost, uh, that hadn't been picked yet, uh, that land is gone. So here we sit, uh, we're, we're here with the available land that we do have, uh, has challenges with infrastructure. And then also as more people move here and the population grows, the demand becomes stronger. Uh, so with supply and demand, the prices go up. Like I'm, so I mentioned there with the, you know, the, the cost of available land. And then with that, the limited available inventory, um, as far as it relates to buildings is typically on the smaller square footage. So opportunities, again, you know, fastest growing county in the country. I verified that fact with Michael, he approved it. Um, and with the 540 corridor, we're really excited about this, I know, as, as y'all know, because that's providing new opportunities for potential growth, uh, with 540 come along and all the interchanges that that will, uh, so, uh, provide. And then to me, one of the biggest things here in opportunities, and Mayor, I know this is part of your vision that, you know, with these opportunities, we can help shape the commercial development, the kind of what we want to see and kind of the community that we want to grow. So how are we doing that? So with the site selection process, uh, working with commercial real estate brokers, site selection consultants, uh, and companies, uh, you hear site selection, well, it's really site elimination. And the best analogy I can use for this, when I'm trying to explain it to, you know, one of my children is economic development, site selection is very similar to looking for a new house. You have your requirements, okay, I want four bedrooms, three baths, two-car garage. You know, you look at five houses, the ones that don't meet those requirements immediately you're removed. So I didn't like the color of this wall, you know, that garage was too small, immediately gets removed. That's very similar to how site selection consultants work. So they look at what you have and, you know, line up with their requirements. If what you have doesn't meet their requirements, you're immediately eliminated and it's just moving on down the line. So that's why we say it's probably misnamed, it's not site selection, it's really site elimination. So, and like I mentioned, their goal is to find the site or building that best feeds their, best fits their needs in the shortest time period. So that's the challenge we sit in. Uh, speed to market, again, I mentioned that. Uh, and then also we see, I know Michael will speak to this, but existing buildings with room for onsite expansion are just a premium. That is, if, if we had, uh, a bunch of those, that'd be great because that answers the company's questions about their long-term future. If they have a building that they can add another a hundred thousand square feet on with a pad next door, I mean, that's a plus. So I can point to examples throughout the state of local communities that have developed that type of product, knowing that the company, uh, may need to expand and to keep them to expand there. So, so yeah, so just like I mentioned, uh, the communities that have available buildings that they control have an advantage for economic development projects. So what that means is, um, I can think of probably two of the best communities in North Carolina that represent that, Wilson County and Catawba County. Uh, Wilson County has land that the county owns, that their nonprofit economic development corporation owns, and a building that they own. So when I was, when I was at the state, if a consultant called me up and said, okay, Nate, you know, here's the company, here's the jobs, here's the square footage requirement. I took all that information down, but then, but then if they're like, but I only want to look at land or buildings that is, you know, controlled by the municipality, that list immediately became very short. That was only a handful of locations in the state that could accommodate that requirement. So they sit at an advantage for potential job creation opportunities. Where if we're kind of more reliant on private development, um, you know, we sit about, uh, at a disadvantage. So I mentioned it there with the land they control. Um, so to counter that, so when a building land control is not an option for a community, another tool, uh, in the entitlement product is an entitlement process that reduces the barriers. So that's kind of where we step in of, okay, we don't control the land, we don't have a building to offer up. What can we do to kind of help facilitate and kind of reduce barriers to encourage development? So moving along to the site selection process, um, I know that you are very familiar with, uh, the proactive approach for site identification that GEDC led a couple of years before I got here with the O'Brien Atkins Firm to identify sites, uh, within Garner that would be primed for commercial industrial development. Kind of trying to figure out basically, okay, where should we grow next, what's next? Um, so we worked on that, uh, and then in partnership, uh, with Wake County, they also worked on, uh, we worked on one together, uh, last year, kind of came up with some of the same similar results, uh, but also weighed in, you know, the infrastructure needs, the cost and everything associated with that. So, uh, without further delay, I'll, uh, transition over to Michael here so he can kind of bring us home and, and finish the rest of the presentation. And then happy to answer any questions at the end.
Thanks. Thank you, Nate. Um, and thank you all for the time this afternoon. Again, my name is Michael Haley, Executive Director of Wake County Economic Development. Like Nate said, um, Wake County Economic Development conducted a, a, a site identification study last year in partnership with all 12 municipalities and the Research Triangle Park to identify new sites. Um, why did we do that? Well, we've had, as your slides indicated Nate, so much economic activity in the market over the last four years. Um, some of our best sites have been, uh, taken. And so we have to identify new sites, like Nate said, you can't sell from an empty wagon. And that's certainly the case when it comes to sites. Um, and so for us, we, we went through this process of, uh, of working on our municipalities and identifying sites through this process, we've identified eight thousand acres for potential industrial and commercial development um, in Wake County. Again, as Nate's earlier, uh, point indicated, why did we, why were we able to find these sites? It's because there's a lack of infrastructure. It's in ETJ or in county jurisdictions. It's really hard. Um, there's a whole bunch of landowners attached to it. So all these things are real tricky, the easy stuff's taken up. So the easy's out of the way, um, in a lot of regards. So that's why we had to do this site identification study with a, with a whole bunch of ongoing work that we're doing with our municipal partners, things like we bring together, um, land use planners, attorneys, developers, et cetera, to help our municipalities in this process. So it's an ongoing effort for sure, as we continue to want to identify new sites throughout the county. I'm going to transition a little bit, I'm going to talk about competitiveness if I could. And maybe I could preface and level set the conversation around competitiveness with a couple of things. Every year at Wake County Economic Development, we work with an economist and we do a study to analyze the one hundred largest metros in the country, um, across two hundred and sixty-six data points. And our goal is to identify where the Raleigh Metro, which obviously includes Garner, uh, it's Wake, Franklin and Johnston Counties is the Raleigh Metro. Where do we stand in terms of competitiveness, economic competitiveness vis a vis our, our peers around the country? And what's important is over the last five years, the Raleigh Metro has either been one or two in that study. When we're not one, Austin, Texas is one. So this last year, we just released it, Austin, Texas is number one, the Raleigh Metro is two. Some of our peers, Atlanta is six, Nashville seven, Boston is twenty-one, and San Francisco is twenty-three. That gives you a sense, that's our peer group as a community, that's our peer group as a region. Um, and so that's really important for, for who we are when we think about competitiveness. For me to, to level set that conversation for us, for our, for our conversation tonight and hopefully for your questions. We talked a little bit about our project activity, I think it's important, again, it's an indication, just, this is just background information to understand when we talk about economic development projects, what do we mean? Right now we're leading thirty-six projects that are actively looking to either expand, an existing company looking to expand in Wake County, or a company new to our market that wants to grow here. What is a, what is a project? An active project in our parlance is a company that we have had discussions with the company that represents in the last thirty days. These are real projects, this isn't lead generation or business development. These are active requirements that are on, on the market. Those projects represent nearly. Those projects represent nearly 14,500 potential jobs and over $8 billion in capital investment. So really big projects, those 14,500 jobs, the average wages of those jobs are all at or above the county average wage. So tremendous opportunity for the residents of Garner and all of Wake County. What are these projects like? They all have commonalities, most of them. They're large, they're extremely complex, with very high capital investment associated with it, like I said, it's $8 billion in potential capital investments. And most of them have really challenging requirements. That's either the size of land, size of building, utility requirements more and more today are more challenging than they've ever been for projects. So really complex projects, they're also really fast-moving, and speed to market's critical for a number of reasons that I can get into later if you'd like. We continue to see a high concentration in life sciences and advanced manufacturing. Life sciences is probably easier for us to understand more broadly, that's things like what's going on, let's say, in Clayton with Novo, or Griffles, or in Holly Springs with Fuji and Amgen, or in the park with Biogen, GSK, et cetera, lots of examples all across our community. It can also include things like, in addition to the manufacturing and production side, it can be supply chain companies or research companies within that life sciences space, really high concentration there. Advanced manufacturing is a little more difficult to pin down. Advanced manufacturing is this idea of where manufacturing, it's very high value-added manufacturing, so it's not traditional North Carolina manufacturing, obviously, in our market. Think of things like chips, EV batteries, EV supply chain and those things, that's where we're really seeing a lot of activity. About 36% of our projects fall within the advanced manufacturing sector, and 61% of our projects, of those 36 projects, about 61% have some type of advanced manufacturing or production component to it. So that's why, that's the need for the very large space that we're most likely talking about in most cases. So competitiveness, so what does competitiveness mean through this economic development lens? I talked about what our competitiveness looks like from the outside, but from the outside looking in, what does it mean? And so I sort of boiled it down to a couple of things I wanted to talk about with you all tonight. One is you have to have the fundamentals. What are the fundamentals? The fundamentals for us in economic development, particularly here in Garner, in Wake County, in the Research Triangle, it's really four things. You've got to have really smart people, so talent, you have to have a diverse economy, which we do, our economy is built on life sciences, advanced manufacturing, clean tech technology, clean tech, those are the four major sectors that we have. Higher ed ecosystem that we have here is second to none when it comes to our large research universities, the big three, plus our HBCUs, plus Wake Tech, which is the largest college in North Carolina by enrollment. And then high quality of life, saw some of that tonight in the survey, high quality of life matters. Those four things are the fundamentals for any community to be successful, have to have the fundamentals. Two, gosh, you got to meet the requirements, like Nate said, this is about site elimination. So in a boardroom that's making a decision, a multi-billion dollar decision in most cases, there are very specific requirements that are necessary for a company to be successful in any market that they may choose. So you got to meet those requirements off the bat, like we talked about before. Speed to market's critical. Again, when we're making a multi-billion dollar decision, speed to market matters, because I have to have that facility in production being profitable as soon as possible. And so that's why speed to market is so critical. And again, reducing barriers for those companies is also important. I think the other thing that's important competitiveness is you have to have long-term partners. There's great examples of Garner's partnership when it comes to things like the Amazon Distribution Center and others, but being in a community that I know as a company that I can rely on my partners in economic development, in the town staff, and town elected officials of being a long-term partner is critical. I'll add two things to this, to this slide that I've heard as we've talked about tonight. One is about flexibility, it's the ability to be business-focused and be flexible when that flexibility is needed, but also when it's necessary. And then the last thing I'd say is around competitiveness is around leveraging the investments that are already being made, investments in things like BRT, N540, and other large infrastructure projects that are going on, we need to be able to leverage those things to really be competitive. So lastly, I'll talk a little bit about competitiveness, there's this great survey that economic developers use in everything that we talk about, and I apologize for the size, I'll send through Nate, no, I sent you a terrible file. And so we'll send you this, it's a great survey. Every year, trade publication for economic development called Area Development does this survey, and they survey two groups of people. One they survey, one group of people they survey are site selection consultants, those people that work with companies in their site location decision process. So it can be one of a, you know, a large accounting firm, a large global corporate real estate firm, you know, small boutique firms, things like that. So they survey them every year, ask them about what's most important in the site selection process. And so it's a great tool that we as economic developers use, because then we can benchmark ourselves against these things, both our sites and our communities. And so what I wanted to draw your attention to here is a couple of things, and it goes back to what I was saying earlier, one, you got to have the fundamentals, skilled labor, number one, so you got to have talent, that's the differentiator for our community for sure. But when you look down this list, you get to available land, and then the responsiveness of state and local government is really important. When you go further down into this list, I think it's also important to note that there are several items related or tangential to land availability that are also important in this process. So things like energy availability, highway accessibility, water availability, expedited or fast track permitting, available buildings, shovel-ready or certified sites, all those things are in the top 20, all of which have above an 80% score in terms of their importance, so that all of those are important or very important in terms of the survey methodology. I mentioned those things together, because in addition to available land, if you just have a piece of land, you just have a piece of land, that's not a site. If you have all these other things in concert, if I have road access, if I have my utilities in place, if I've got the proper zoning, if I've got an option or I own the land, or however that structure is, I've got a site. So all these things in concert give us a site, that's the competitiveness of why these things are so important. So just wanted to provide some brief comments to Mr. Mayor and Council this evening. Again, happy to answer any questions along with Nate that we can about this.
Yes, I have a question. I usually wait till the last, but since we're going to break at eight, I want to get my question in, and I like it that you're both standing up there. This is extremely important information that you shared with us, you guys live and breathe this every day, we just get little pieces of it now and then. So I'm going to cut right to the chase, the things that we have control over, that the town of Garner has control over, we don't have buildings that we own standing by, we don't have land that we own ready for this. So that brings me to ask the question, where does Garner's SUP process, our responsiveness, where does that put us in the competitiveness rating?
Okay, happy to, I think-
I'll let you answer that.
Well, I think this is where I come back to the flexibility, Mayor, I appreciate the question. I think that's, this is where flexibility is critical, and speed to market, those two things obviously go hand in hand. So having the flexibility within the process, within the proper zoning and things like that, to make decisions very quickly at a staff and an elected official level is important when it comes to economic development. I know there's, other communities are focused on these things as well, I think the process that we're going through tonight's important, because again, I go back to speed, market and flexibility, those things are important. As we identify sites, which we have identified sites in Garner, in the process that we've talked about, we've been able to identify, you know, nearly 1,000 acres of potential sites, so that's not the challenge for us, the challenge is going to be getting those through a process, so that they become not just available land, but sites as I mentioned before. So I think flexibility and speed are critical in this path forward.
Thank you, and let me ask even more pointedly, where do we stack up in responsiveness, flexibility, getting it done?
Yeah, well, I'll say this, right now it's difficult, because there's no available existing buildings, and some of the property that we're talking about is limited, because we don't have the size. I think it's an area that the town can continue to improve in, it sounds like this part of what we're talking about tonight is part of that process, so I think it's an important aspect of Garner's continued growth and in economic development.
And Mayor, I can speak to just, I mean, the responsiveness portion of that question, you know, like I said, you know, Wake County ED, one of our most valuable partners, I promise you, every single time, you know, Michael's name comes across my phone, or Ashley, or Sam, or anyone from the team, you know, that call, you know, immediately gets picked up, because I know the other end of that call is, hey, we have a project that, you know, is considering Garner, you know, they could be coming in tomorrow. So, you know, and I've worked with them for a long time when I was at the state side, so I have a good working relationship with Michael and everyone on the team there, so responsiveness, you know, will never be an issue, you know, from where I sit. And then also too, kind of piggybacking on Michael's comments earlier, talking about competitiveness and kind of where we stack up, you know, I appreciate Michael being here, obviously, from Wake County's perspective, but I can tell you, you know, looking at the slide that Jeff had up there earlier, of communities that have this requirement, communities that don't, I can tell you, having sat in those rooms, in the rooms with the decision makers, when they are truly looking at an Excel spreadsheet and looking for X's that, you know, that mark, okay, there's something here that we don't want there to be, I love it when it's just clean all the way down. So looking at the, you know, the information that Jeff provided there, and kind of going back, when we meet quarterly with our Wake County, all the municipalities in Wake County meet, I think we have a meeting Thursday, yeah, all of us are sitting around, all of us are very competitive, we're economic developers, we want to win, all of us are sitting around, it's a little bit like that scene in Top Gun, where they're all sitting around wondering who the best is, all of us are doing that. And I know, you know, where we're strong, and other areas are a little bit more challenging, but I like where we stack up in Wake County, especially with specific industry. So hopefully that answers that question a little bit.
And we have two minutes remaining for one question, and we will break at eight, or I will suffer later.
I was going to say, could we extend it beyond the eight, what we've got going on here, a few more minutes, if possible?
We're going to try to get it done by eight, and we'll come back-
Just a quick comment, this gentleman there, when I was a county commissioner, we had a chance to work together, and man, some of these issues have never gone away, I know we were fighting them back in those days at the county level, now here at the municipal level now, and, but when I, the presentation that you gave, it said, we had all the square footage, 100% gone, 100% gone, 100% gone. If there is such a demand, what am I missing here? I know we've got sites identified, what am I missing that we're not getting the investors coming, so I want to build 100,000, I want to be a 250,000 square, because we've got these demands, we're ready to do it. Where are we falling short, what am I missing here, and it's probably right under my nose and I'm not seeing it.
Let me take that at first.
Go ahead.
So the two quick, short answers to that are infrastructure and utilities, those are the two kind of biggest issues we face right now, water, sewer, and then the lead time, our friends at Duke will tell you, you know, the lead time on a transformer's, you know, six months, eight months. So that right now, you know, the product that we are available, you know, to get ready and up and running is great, I mean, we need that, you know, to deal with the pent-up demand, but going forward, that's why, to kind of answer your question, all this available land, you know, it's just land, it's not a site, I mean, there's a big difference, you know, land is land, it's raw, a site, you know, has all the infrastructure in place and is ready to go. So hopefully that kind of answers the question about kind of dealing with, why don't we see more right now, it's just utilities and infrastructure.
I'll give you one more, I'll give you one more word, Mr. Matt, that I'll say is capital. So right now, what we're seeing is challenges on the capital markets for very large developers. There's also, there's a lot of space in Wake County overall, especially when it comes to like very specific high-end life science space, lab space, that's still available. So you're looking at, for instance, in Mooresville, there's two billion dollar investments of speculative buildings being put up across the street from each other, on McKimmon Parkway, in Holly Springs, there's another set of about half a million or so square feet being developed. And so right now, that, those things have to be taken up, and those aren't the pure owner-operator sites, like a Fuji or an Amgen or Novo, they're owner-operator. So there's still some absorption in the market that needs to occur, but the other thing is capital. It's just, it's expensive right now for a lot of developers to borrow those funds to do that. I think that's easing, you're seeing more development occurring. So our ability in Garner to be flexible in speed to market, when we come out, when rates, when they feel more comfortable that they're normalizing, being the early adopter is the winning position on the front end of the cycle, and I think a lot of developers are looking at that right now. Sorry for the extended answer.
Excellent, that's good stuff, and there may be other questions related here, but we're going to go by the schedule, we're going to take a 10-minute recess now, try to be back at about 12 minutes past eight, and we'll reconvene. And people might have a question to ask you here just casually. Thank you, back at eight, 12, please, thank you. Thank you.
Squeeze out as much net revenue.
Yeah, so yeah, Mr. Dallinger, yeah, I don't have that information on hand. What I can do is go back specific to Wake County, look at some of the last big announcements over the last four or five years, and then pull those, and then work with our partners at Wake County to kind of run the ROI kind of model on that of, you know, basically, you know, all these billion dollar plants coming in, you know, what their benefit to the municipality was.
Well, and even the basics of the tax value itself, private, the land, personal property, all that stuff, and so what is the impact on the coffer of the town?
Right.
Because again, you, sometimes you're better off not doing anything than doing something that's going to blow a hole in your budget.
Right.
Or cut off a future opportunity that may be even better. Because once these things, you know, any, anything that you build is going to be there for a long time. But I think the, the number one place to go is say, we've got all these flex spaces, you've got 600 square feet, I guess they need a special use permit, but they're all right. Go through, how much is this generating for the town? And I think that falls parallel to our, our break even stuff that we're doing. It puts it into context to say, oh, we got this on this 20 acre site, we've got, you know, it's commercial, over here we've got townhomes, which ones moving the needle away from continuing to raise taxes? The other question, and that's sort of a, a task, because I think it's good to see those numbers and the impact on our budget of having, what is a significant portion of our commercial real estate portfolio, which is good, we, it's a benefit we have in the county versus a lot of municipalities that are lopsided residential. The other question I have on these projects and the chatter, one, what are the projects? And if it's a closed session question, then that's a closed session question, but the other is, which of these are developers, they're, they're the ones that want to do it, and which ones are brokers? And because again, you mentioned in kind of one sentence, a couple of things, one, you mentioned, this is Fuji film, and these are also speculative, and those two have different risks associated with them for the, the town. Again, when you're, especially when you're committing a site, a large tract of land, like what is the probability of this project's actually going to come to fruition and, and be what all the hype was about? When, you know, the applicant came in, are they going to be able to really produce the results that they're sort of saying on the front end? So that, that is a kind of, I don't feel like I'm in the know, I mean, and I look at what the body of work we have around projects that we know are impactful for the community, Wake Med, VA Clinic, when we get it, and it's like, this is clearly a benefit for the community, kind of will move mountains to make those things happen. So that, that's kind of where, what, what, what are we paving the way for that we can, you know, say, oh yeah, this is, this is going to be transformative fiscally, right? And maybe job creation or whatever. Those are my two sort of biggest questions, and really always go back to fiscal element on the town.
Couple, couple of these, if I, if I could, just a, a general, and we can certainly work with Nate, we've got a modeling tool in plan that it's the generally accepted tool that we, that we use to, to model projects, and we can do like an example project to say like, hey, if a project came in and invested, we could figure something out to do that. And what you'll see, and the examples I use, like, for instance, in Morrisville, the example I used, that is a developer bought that property, the town is not, it's a, the town's not a part of that process right now at all, so that, when I say speculative, it is on a developer to make that happen. So in that regard, it's a, they're going to, they're constructing speculative buildings now that will be taxed, there was nothing on that land previously, this thing was actually unlocked from McKimmon Parkway extension. So previously, this was a landlot, it was like almost manna from heaven, 430 acres dropped into the middle of Morrisville that was previously undevelopable because there was no way to get to it. When McKip, McKimmon Parkway came through, it unlocked it, so it's, it's a vastly net positive impact on the town, that's an example. For something like a Fuji film that's owned by, by Fuji, they'll be one of the largest taxpayers in Wake County. At the end, they're $3.2 billion of, of capital investment that they'll make, that'll make them one of the largest taxpayers in the entire county, that's public record, it'll be in the tax rolls. So it's things like that, those, those things become a, a, a very high net positive in the long term, even when you include incentives which are very short term, term, or additional infrastructure the town may have to outfit because it's impacting other businesses that will be in the area and things like that. But we've got a whole bunch of modeling tools that, that Nate and I can work together.
I think that's helpful from the perspective of what existing projects that have hard numbers, and saying this is comparable to this project.
Right. Yep, apples, apples.
It's just money. It's taxes, it's kind of important to people. Yeah, that's a whole question.
Well, that, that's an excellent question, I just want to say thanks for both of those questions. What is the impact on the budget, which means property tax in the short run and the long run? And, and what kind of project would be best? We need to always be thinking about it at any time. So any information we get on future projects, like your model, would be very, very helpful and insightful for us. And Mr. Vance?
Yes, Mike, in reference to what you're witnessing here with us going through this text amendment and looking at the, looking at the, the, the SUP. And, and looking, the businesses are looking at coming to Garner. Would that process be a way of eliminating Garner from consideration if they have multiple sites to look at, if it's too difficult for them to try to make the, to comply with the SUP?
I think the more, thank you for the question, Mr. Vance, I think the more difficult any permitting process is, the more likely a site will be your community's eliminated. Again, speed to market becomes paramount, it's a site elimination process, so the more flexible the town can be in working with a company or, or developer on speed to market for these transformational projects, I think is paramount.
Has there been an eliminating, eliminate element in past consideration for Garner?
Considering there's not a lot of available property right now, I'm not aware of any at this moment, but that's because, a lot of it's because there's, there's not a lot that we can put into the mix when it comes to RFPs, RFQs that we, that we receive from companies or consultants. But that is paramount to these projects. Again, I go back to, these are large capital investments, they need these projects to become profitable very quickly, and so the back and forth of the permitting application process is something that's an easy thing to eliminate a community over.
But considering the fact that most of the buildings in Garner are already leased, it was not a problem.
Well, Mr. Singleton, I think one challenge is, if you notice, most of the buildings that have been leased are some type of distribution or warehousing. And the people that are building those buildings know that because of Garner's proximity to the highway network, they can take the time for the additional step, because they can have at least the moment that the SUP is approved by council, long before it's out of the ground, it can be nearly a fully leased. What we're trying to do is put the tools in place so that we can go after jo, uh, companies and jobs that are going to give a bigger impact to our community, because we're glad to have some of our distribution partners in town and employers, but at the end of the day, they don't have a lot of personal property in their buildings that add to the tax base, they don't employ a large number of people, and the average wage that they're paying for a warehousing distribution job is nowhere near the averages that we're seeing for some of these other types of industries like advanced manufacturing. So what we're trying to do is put the tools in place before we ever have the deal, so that we're competitive to be able to attract a deal to Garner, because if we don't do that, I think what we're going to see with any future commercial development is going to be much more warehouse and distribution, because they know that they can stomach the additional time that it takes to go through an SUP process if it remains in place and still have it listed, uh, still have it leased. We just don't reap the benefits that we believe we need to with any future commercial development.
I understand all that, I understand, it didn't slow the process before, but I understand because I'm in favor of the changes, I understand all that.
It did slow it, and so I will say, it did slow the process because they had to go through it. So it slowed the process, but they were willing and they could work into their model to take the risk. We do know that we've had projects in the past that, that we did not, were not able to still stay in the running because we had an additional step to the process. So I think we just have to decide what type of future job creation we want to help incentivize, not, not with dollars necessarily, but through process to attract to our town.
Right. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Hodges, Mr. Matthews?
I think we got to the immediate question there, which is good. Just as an add on, and I'm reflecting back, and I think you and I talked about earlier, far as incentives, I know at county, we used to have, if it's a hundred million dollar investment or 500 million, we had a certain level that we give incentives, basically, they got a portion back of their taxes, kind of what we do here on incentives, or have done in the past, is no, no matter where it went, long as it's in Wake County, is that still on board at this time? Nate probably already knows that.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we have an active incentive policy, so we get the next project that comes along, if it meets the requirements, that's absolutely one that we would submit for approval.
Can I add, can I add something, Mr. Matthews?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dallinger, it goes to your point too, around the fiscal nature of some of these things, when we're talking about these incentives to companies, one, from the county's perspective, the county's, the county doesn't pay out more than it, than it would receive, so it's a grant based on net new ad valorem taxes, the maximum amount that a company could receive from an investment that qualified is 50%. So the important thing is from, from a financial or fiduciary responsibility, that's an important aspect of, of this as well. Secondarily, those in, those, if, if a company were to qualify for an incentive, those, those incentives go to the company, they don't go to a developer, or someone who's constructing in a third party, it goes to the company, they're the ones making the actual investment and employing our residents, that's, that's where that incentive would go, and it's an important tool in the toolbox, it's not the only thing, because you have to check off, like we just said on that list, you have to check off a whole bunch of other things to be competitive before incentives come into play, but they're, they're certainly part of the toolbox.
And I'll, I'll piggyback on that, so, and my favorite part of the incentives is they're performance based, so if the company doesn't hire the jobs or make the capital investment, you know, they don't qualify for that reimbursement. So to me, that's one of the most important things is, you know, we're just not showing out tax dollars, the company has to do what they're saying they're going to do, and then they get their payment back.
That incentive policy is spread out over time, because I know, there's been some articles recently about some state projects that have failed to live up to what they were, what they obligated themselves to, and the incentive program was not in place because they didn't meet the standards or meet the tiers.
Correct, it was, in a lot of cases, here locally for the, the county performance base, it's net new ad valorem, they have to make, there's, there's a certain amount of investment as well as job metrics they have to meet. The good news is, once they build that building, it's always on the tax rolls, it's not going away, so that's a positive. Secondarily, on, on, for state incentives, most of the, most of the cases that, that you would see, it's the companies themselves that have, that have asked to rescind the incentives, and a lot of it has to do with post pandemic hiring structures, so they would say, hey, we're going to hire 500 people, and it may be, what we're doing is actually hiring 400, and there's going to be, you know, 100 people that are remote, not working either in Wake County or not working in North Carolina, those, those don't qualify. In those cases, that's just an example, but you're right, they're performance based, and it's important that our, our taxpayers are protected through, through those standards that we've created.
On the building themselves, is, is the policy based on the investment, or is it based on what the assessed value will be?
It's, it's not based on the investment, it's based on the assessed value, so it's the net change in assessed value year over year is essentially the, how it is structured, so they'll, it's improvements, it's, there's no value of land, so if there's a land transfer cost, let's say there's a land sale involved in it, at the county, that, if that land's already on the tax rolls, it's not included in their investment, so it's real personal property only, net new ad valorem.
Michael, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Johnson. Yeah, I have a question for, I think, our attorney. So are, are we able to waive a special use permit on a per project basis, or is that not something under state law we're permitted to do?
So in order to use the special use permit, you have to have criteria and what it applies to, so you couldn't waive it on a case by case basis, but you could create exemptions, like have been promoted in this, that certain things don't require it, based on different types of things, but unless you would bake that into and adopt that in the UDO, that there are criteria for when it could be waived on a specific project. But in order to go through those case by case kind of things, you're going to create a delay in the process, because you, they won't have the entitlement, because now it's, it's, we don't know whether we need a special use permit, we still have to go before council to potentially waive, but it could shorten the timeframe to some extent, it would be more flexible.
But it's not, it doesn't address the time, the entitlement?
Right.
Issue, okay, thank you.
But under the current UDO, you don't have the ability to waive, we would have to adopt something to, to give structure to that, though.
I, I, yeah, you're creating a new process, basically.
And let, let me ask her a follow up question on that while she's speaking. Earlier today, we talked about this a little bit, and what I think some of our council members are concerned about is losing control, if we don't have an SUP to double check the details, and you made an observation that, that these recommendations or remaining amendments would eliminate an SUP for certain pre-described things like hospitals or certain things. Then you said, and even then, we still have the ability to use our zoning process and zoning conditions and permitted uses way ahead of SUP that might help us get the kind of direction and kind of control, could you elaborate on that just a little bit?
Yes, and I may have to defer to Mr. Trezenberg and Mr. Gruber, but my, my sense is that we don't have a lot of land already zoned in these type of higher use districts available that have some of the infrastructure, so almost, and again, I have to defer to them, but generally, it will come to you before, with a rezoning. For instance, the AC, the Activity Center District, that doesn't exist on any land right now, but anyone could petition for that. So it would likely come to council as a rezoning in order to do a large project, like some of what the SUPs are envisioning.
Not to put words in your mouth, but the way I understood it, that would be the point at which council could limit uses, put in zoning conditions, architectural details, et cetera, knowing that it would not be coming back for an SUP later, because if one of these were adopted over 25, up to 25, 250,000 square feet, et cetera, if we know that going into the zoning, we can try to get our handle on this project by limiting uses and other details in the zoning conditions.
And, and the one caveat is that the developer or the property owner has to propose those limited uses and conditions. Now, you could say, you can just say, we don't like this package that you've proposed, and we're not going to rezone you at this time. And there's some give and take there, but they have to be voluntary conditions in a rezoning.
Okay, you answered my question, you had another point, was your question?
In, in just the number five under the SUP exemptions, there's the non-residential mixed use threshold from 100 to 250 per building four, and B is develop, B, development on track already in corporate limits at time of application for sites, specific, specific plan approval. What projects are, are those? Or is that a hypothetical, but it sounds like almost a catch in the moment sort of clause that at some point wouldn't be relevant anymore.
Right, so that would include anything that's in the corporate limits today, that's already zoned. It could potentially be a tier, what the, it was crafted to potentially allow for a tier one rezoning, where you would have that capability to get at some of the conditions ahead of time, and then once they get past that tier one rezoning, then the SUP would not be further.
I was misread, okay, so that, you, I was reading it as on track in our pipeline, this is on a track, on, on land, got it?
Right.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, 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 you, I read it out loud in my head, and then it was on track, as in, it's in, okay, so this would apply to anything already here at time of application for, okay, got it, understood, thank you.
Any other observations or questions for our guests? Well, that, that being the case, thank you very much, this was very helpful, would you, you have some closing comments?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, yeah, I want to be sure to close us out here, so, just to kind of sum up everything, so, I know you saw at the start of the presentation, and I talked about kind of where we were, where we are, where we want to go, so, you know, where we, where we were, all that product was developed, is filled, is where we are now. You know, where we're going, you know, with the, I think the Wake County site study showed that, you know, there's 1,800 acres of available land to Garner, well, you know, we talked about, that's just land, that's not a site, you know, the infrastructure's not there, the zoning's not there. So then, moving on to the theme of competitiveness, to be as competitive as we can with that land, and then knowing that, you know, supply is limited and speed to market is crucial. I kind of want to go back to one of the points Mr. Dallinger made about hearing about projects in closed session, as an economic developer, when you hear projects announced in other locations, your first thought is always, were we on the list? And if we were, when were we eliminated without us even knowing? So if it's a project that we're working on in Wake County that we're in the mix for, and then, you know, we hear, oh, okay, there's a ribbon cutting in Knightdale, you know, my first thought is, I'm calling it Michael, hey, man, when did we lose that project? You know, and a lot of times, the economic developers can't tell you that you've been removed, because the company is just, nope, we're moving forward on this one, the ones that lost, we'll find out the day that we cut the ribbon, so don't tell them. Sometimes they can tell us that, I've been on opposite ends of both those conversations, but the need to remain competitive, I don't ever want it to have to be where, you know, I'm hearing about another community winning a project, kind of going back to Mr. Dallinger's point of, I mean, I would love to bring, you know, projects to closed session every week, I mean, that's our job, you know, look at this company, considering us, we're still on the list, we have control. So to kind of sum up the entire presentation tonight is, you know, that's why we're kind of so passionate about the recommendations here for the competitive, competitiveness factor, you know, for these zoning text amendment changes, obviously in alignment with the Garner Forward Comp Plan, kind of, kind of why we feel, feel so kind of strong about this issue of making sure that we are as competitive as we can be.
Thank you, John, any other observations? That's, that's pretty strong closing statement there, like, and again, not to put words in your mouth, but the ta, the task before our council is that next week, that we will make a decision on all or part of these recommended amendments. We took a big whack at it last time, got the, the clarifying and the simpler, I will say, things passed, now we have these three before us, and really it's two, I'm looking at it as the residential, which we're calling page three of your slides, and then the, the non-residential, which is four and five. So we will be addressing these a week from tonight, based on the information that we've learned here. I would encourage all council members to continue your questions to Nate, and John, Jody, Terry, everybody in the meantime, so we can make a good decision a, a week from tonight. And I'll take any other suggestions of how to move this ahead.
Mayor, just for clarity's sake, it might be helpful to have council give feedback to staff on sort of the two specific areas of the proposed amendments to the UDO. One, that was focused on economic development, that we've just spent some time learning more about and getting a better idea of what competitiveness looks like and how flexibility's important, and then the other piece would be the proposed revisions in terms of the impact on residential. So if council would like to give us some guidance on sort of those two areas, we can prepare an item for further discussion or approval at your August 6th meeting.
Would you like individual feedback on that? What's the best way to get the feedback that will help?
So, so my suggestion to council would be, since we just finished talking about economic development, if there aren't any additional questions or comments, is there a consensus among the council members to move forward with what's being proposed for the revisions to the UDO as it relates to the economic development items? And Jeff, would you mind putting those things back up on the screen, please?
And in our packet, I think what you're putting up there, Jeff, page four and page five, both, or those are both labeled as non-residential use related, or one is non-residential use related to others as SUP, are these the two that you're talking about?
Yes, and so if there are any final comments or questions regarding these areas, a simple thumbs up would be appropriate if council feels like you're at a place to move these things forward as proposed. If you would like to have further discussion on these items, it would be helpful for staff to know what additional information you may need to help us come to a conclusion at that first meeting in August.
I'll start, I'm good on everything, I set the upper residential, which suggests deferral, and that passes everything but that. Jeff suggested that, we can have some more discussion.
Just a kind of a tangential question, probably a Jeff question. When we do our ETJ expansion, when it comes into ETJ, what will happen to the existing zoning?
Yeah, the vast majority of it is very low density residential, so those I would envision is mostly going to be rezoned to RA. There are some areas, I'd say the second category is what's called the Wake County Highway District, which is always a challenge, because it's very odd. Primarily, we, we can't really downzone it, so we have to look at somewhat what's comparable, that's always a tough one with that district. We have in the past rezoned, if there's kind of an existing development pattern, where there are some industrial uses that have been allowed, we've had to rezone to at least something that would accommodate that. The trick is, is to try to find something that is close, but doesn't open the door way beyond what they could have done in Wake County.
Yeah, because when I was looking at the 5540 area, you've got that highway, said it's sort of a R30, but with more permitted uses ironically with special use permit.
Right.
But I was trying to wonder, I'm trying to figure out what, how that, is that an over, would we turn that into an overlay, or would that be like, a, that was kind of my question, it's sort of related, it's kind of not, because parcels are split and all that other stuff, but there was just a question about how the rezoning would be handled once it comes into the ETJ.
Yeah, what, what I'll ask staff to do is to go back through and see, it is helpful that some of, that what you were just saying is that those non-residential uses have to be approved through an SUP in Wake County, so they're not just by right uses. To see if we have a district that will cover most of those, but not necessarily all. I think another district that maybe we've used in the past was something similar to NMX or neighborhood business, it kind of gives a nod to that, but at a very low scale, so that anything that's going to be higher in intensity and scale has to go through that rezoning.
So there's no direct statutory formula or anything, it's sort of a, when it comes in, we sort of can do anything but downzone?
Right.
Okay. Okay, that was, Mr. Mayor?
Curiosity question. I'll agree with my colleague, Mr. Singleton here, I think it's, we've heard a well presented night, so the staff can meet, move forward with two through five, and, and continue to work on that, number one, I believe, that would give you guys the guidance you needed, is, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I would agree with Mr. Singleton on that also.
Thanks for the clarification, it is addressing the question.
Yes, it is, and so we'd, we'd love to hear the other insight from other council members on this issue, if you're comfortable with us moving these items forward for your consent agenda at the August 6th meeting.
Just one point of clarity for me, because there, on this end, I couldn't hear clearly what was being said, so do you mind restating, stating it, please, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, yes, Mr. Vance, we have remaining amendments, and I said the only one was the, the deferral that Jeff suggested, the upper story residential, everything else I'm good with, everything else has been suggested, I had no trouble with at all.
Right, thank you.
My, my issue with the residential, I think I mentioned last meeting, is I just want somebody to be able to put 500 apartments up beside an existing neighborhood without somebody at least knowing about it.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarity, good to go.
So it seems, based on discussion and sort of nodding our heads, council's comfortable with us moving this forward, except for what we're going to with us moving this forward, except for, well, we're going to defer the additional conversation on the residential units for second stories and above to a further date. But council's comfortable with us moving forward with what's being proposed to, to the UDO in terms of the economic development amendments?
Yes.
All right?
Yes.
All right. Well, that's very helpful, council. Thank you. We, from a staff perspective, will work to pull this information together, to have it as part of your consent agenda. I would like to thank Mr. Trezenberg for all his work, him and his team's work, to get us through this, this complicated and technical issue, to make sure that we stay competitive, but also that we're in alignment with our UDO, with our new Garner Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Haley, it was great to meet you. Thank you so much for being here, and sharing your insights, as far as what you're seeing in economic development in the county and across the state. And then, Mr. Gruber, thank you so much for sharing sort of an updated economic development. I think that having all that information gave us a bigger picture understanding of the decisions that council was being asked, and so appreciate that work. Thank you.
Michael, you should come back and visit us more often, and you see a lot more of this.
Mr. Mayor, if I could have a comment, just in sort of combining the survey stuff that we saw earlier, with sort of the economic development presentation, I think it's, I'd like to see us as collectively, sort of have a broader economic development portfolio and scope within economic development. We're looking at small business development sites for that, because you've got the big-scale stuff, but we're seeing, we've got these really big holes compared to some of our peer communities, but also making sure we're tying in this optimization of, of, of land use and revenue generation on the, in numbers in front of us, too, because I think that's really helpful for people to see that impact on the budget. And then the last is sort of, goes in hand-in-hand with the other one, but that is sort of building community and places and small-scale commercial, and I know this is going to sound outlandish, but Kathy will agree with me, the arts are an economic development driver, too. And so, three things we've agreed on since we've been on council together, and that's what, there, there it is. But I think that it is important, when you're building community, to make a, a place to, to come, to visit, and a place you don't have to leave. And I think that matters, too, when you're talking to companies, and what amenities do you have? What is your community like? What are my employees? What, where am I coming? And it's one more thing you can kind of pull out of your case, and we've got this great performing arts center, we've got these art programs, and, you know, maybe on the fringes, it doesn't matter that much on the, you know, when you're doling out billions of dollars, but when you're like, we're investing in our community. We want your employees to have a great place to live, affordable place to live, great shopping, places to eat. Because that's what we're competing against, when you're talking about Austin and these other places, is what's the community like? So, I think that, as we evolve our conversations, we're incorporating all these elements into this holistic approach to economic development. So, move forward. I, I wish we'd do the upper story residential a little sooner, because I think there's opportunity there, but that's fine, we can push that down.
We'll do that next time. Excellent observations, and I think I heard in there somewhere also a small business, and let's don't forget that Garner was not built by businesses of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet, not a hundred thousand square feet. We're not like Durham and big manufacturing centers. We were built a small business, a thousand square feet, five thousand square feet at a time. Twenty-five thousand, that was a big business. And so, let's, let's don't forget to try to encourage those businesses as well. They may be very small bricks, as opposed to a very big building, but this town was built a brick at a time. Let's, let's keep our focus on them, while we also try to shoot for the moon, so to speak. So, excellent job, both of you. Greatly appreciate your input. And with that, we'll move right along to the next thing on the agenda. We have a general discussion, but I'm gonna, excuse me. Jeff's looking puzzled.
[laughing]
Okay. With that being said, I think the next item on our agenda is a manager report.
Yes, Mayor. Quickly, I'll go over a few of our manager reports. First is our pending agenda. This looks at the items we have on, we have scheduled for the August meetings. Looking at your first meeting on August 6th, we have a few consent items to set public hearings for annexation projects at thirty-four twelve Benson Road, and nineteen fifty-one Highway Seventy. There'll be a public hearing for the, for twenty-three eleven Parkway Drive. And then, under Old New Business, we've got a few items. First, introducing you to our new finance, Assistant Finance Director, and a resolution appointing him as Deputy Finance Director. That's just a technicality that we need to do as part of state statute. Also, talking about the Wilmington Place Project as, again, as well. And then, we'll move this, the last item, the zoning text amendment, based on our discussion this evening, we'll move that item to the consent part of the agenda as well. Looking forward to the August twentieth regular meeting, we've got a few items. We've got some consent budget amendments for some scholarships and grants for the Parks, Recreation and Culture Resources Department. Two public hearings for Bethel Green and Pool Drive Fuel Sales. And then, when you look forward to the work session, we have penciled in further discussion on council's code of conduct and ethics, that council said they wanted to discuss, bring back to council for further discussion. We'll also have our quarterly economic development report. So, Mr. Gruber will be visiting us again at the work session in August with his quarterly report. So, that's just a brief review of the pending agenda. Are there any questions regarding the pending agenda? If not, if you recall, last month, we introduced a new item to the work session agenda, looking at the development activity map, the interactive map that's on the town's website, and wanted to bring to council's attention, as well as the public's attention, any new projects that may have been added to, to the, to the map, as a way to stay informed earlier in the process. So, I'll ask Mr. Trezenberg if he will come up and pull up the map, and highlight anything new that's been added in the last thirty days.
Not a lot. I do expect we may have a couple, couple more updates for you next month. But in discussing with Alex, our G I S specialist, which projects have come in for the first time with the potential for neighborhood meetings, the only one that I did not point out to you last month would be the Copper Ridge Project. That's a name you're probably familiar with. You may have seen it before, and I think maybe that one even got to public hearing. I can't quite recall if it did or not. But the original project went away. Another development is potentially looking at bringing that project back in a slightly different format. So, we have added that back to the project, and you can see the initial sketch plan that they've submitted along with that. But it is focused just on single-family residential detached.
And we got a notice from both Ms. Miller, and also in the mail from them on that.
Yep.
Question?
Mm-hmm.
Some of these, I try to click it on, and nothing shows up. I'll try to see the plan. Is that because it may be a tier one, or, I mean, nothing, Rock Quarry Road Assemblage? Nothing shows.
Yes, that is just a tier one, so there's not a whole lot that can be shown with that at this time. We will be working with them to get conditions and things like that finalized, and once we have those, we can attach those.
Okay, I was, that's specific by someone. What do I know? So, I don't know much either one, and I knew, no, thank you for explaining.
Right.
I assumed it was a tier one.
Yes. And I'll, and if it's, well, I'll check into that with Alex, and see if there's a way that we can kind of draw somebody's attention to the fact that it's one of those, somehow within the program, if possible.
All right. If there are no further questions from Mr. Trezenberg, I'll ask him to stay at the podium, and provide information on the recommendation for the pedestrian plan oversight, so.
Yep. Unless the council has a strong desire to appoint a fresh new board specifically focused at, potentially, a lot of communities, if they are making a big push on both bicycle and pedestrian amenities, they will sometimes establish a separate bike and ped advisory committee. But in the absence of that, and your appetite for doing that, staff would just recommend that we simply add this plan as part of the planning commission's review during their consistency discussions on projects, as well as anything else that may come up independently, if that is all right with, with you.
How does that overlap with greenways and that, because there's not a lot of integration of the greenway stuff with the pedestrian plan, if I remember correctly, but I may be wrong.
There, there is some, greenways are the, are the challenging, the challenging infrastructure, because it does span both the recreation and the transportation side of things. We did ask the consultant to kind of take a fresh look at some of those greenway corridors, to try to give them a little more definition than what is currently in the Parks and Rec Plan. So, we are, we will be starting to defer to that, if there are specific recommendations. But to the extent there, that really should be all of the major overlap, as otherwise it's specifically focused on sidewalks and other internal connections.
It seems that there's consensus among council to ask the planning commission to take this on as a part of their review discussion, as part of consistency. Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Trezenberg.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Really, quickly, before we finish up with the manager reports, I wanted to bring to council's attention that we've made some improvements to the agenda process online. And I've asked Mr. Mercer to just give you a quick update. The improvements have just made the, the process easier for council members, as well as the public, to find information about council's meetings, agendas, presentations, just a little easier to find on the website and to navigate, so. Mr. Mercer?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. It's good, good to be here. As, as Ms. Miller said, we, we aim to make some improvements, to streamline some staff processes, and to create a, an improved agendas calendar page, that kind of gathers a lot of the meeting resources in one place. So, in the past, we had, if you clicked on, well, let's navigate to it, through the council dropdown menu. In the past, you would have had an old page that was sort of a database table, looked very dated. So, we've updated a bit and added some resources to this page. We have some tiles here that will navigate you to archive, which I'll describe in a minute, public hearing notices that are current, the council comments form. We sometimes get feedback from residents with, using that form. And then, the e-news sign-up, where you can get, you can sign up to receive notices for upcoming meetings, public notices, also the newsletter. But then, the meat of this is kind of down here, where we have the calendar. You can see all your, it's, it's filterable, and so, this is filtered here to show future meetings, and tonight's is included in the future. So, you can see where we had the agenda uploaded. We have our presentations. In recent months, we've tried to, to do a better job, I guess, of uploading a lot of those, the presentations you see during meetings, to upload those in advance, and to leave them up on the website so folks can reference them, either beforehand or after, after a meeting. We are hearing feedback, I think, from both council and, and the public, that that was a, something that people were desiring. So, you'll see in this table, you got your upcoming meetings, you got your agenda. If you filter by all past, it introduces another column for minutes. And so, from July first on, all of, all of the meetings from July first on, the minutes will be uploaded here. And so, again, it's kind of the one-stop repository for all of our meeting resources, whereas in the past, we kind of had them in different places, and staff were uploading them in different places. So, this just kind of streamlines everything. Now, the caveat here is, for our minutes prior to July first, twenty, two thousand twenty-four, a few weeks ago, we're still going to ask folks to navigate to what, this was kind of what the old agendas and minutes page looked like, if you can recall navigating to it. So, you'll see minutes up through that last June meeting, you'll see the agendas are paired with them, so you can reference those as well. That's sort of the, the improvements in a nutshell. I should stress to residents that if you had that agendas and minutes page bookmarked, it's still going to work, because really, it's the same page, same URL, we just redesigned it. And so, you shouldn't experience any broken link problems. And, and that's it.
Just like to thank Mr. Mercer and his team, working with the clerks, and Mr. Hodges, on sort of coming up with a solution that really helped navigating the, the section on the website a little easier, and it really helps with engagement with our community and transparency of all our agendas and presentations. So, just want to commend them for their, their good work on this.
Ms. Miller, if I could add one thing, council members on your town-issued laptops, you had an icon that would take you to the most recent agenda. If anyone is using that icon, you may find that it is not going to work after we make this change. So, if you are using that laptop and would like us to set up a new icon that will get you to this page, let us know. We'll be glad to do that. We'll also can send out a link to the page following the meeting tonight. We'll send it tomorrow, just so you could bookmark it. But if you would prefer to rely on that icon, we'll work with I T to either see if they can push out a change to where that icon goes, or because it went to an older-style page, it may be easier for us to replace it on your desktop and provide you a new link. So, just reach out to me and let me know, and we'll coordinate that work.
Thank you, Mr. Hodges. And the final announcement is just a reminder that our first Affordable Housing Task Force meeting is scheduled for tomorrow afternoon. We'll be meeting up in the, excuse me, Thursday, and after, I keep thinking today's Wednesday, but it's not, on Thursday afternoon, starting at three o'clock. And will be our first meeting, a sort of organizing of the group. They are public meetings and open to the public, and so we're excited to start that process. That's all the updates that I have for this evening. Happy to answer any other questions council may have.
Any other council questions for the town manager? Hearing none. We'll move to the attorney reports.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to report that we have our entire legal team here tonight.
Yay!
And as it was stated on the pending agenda, we have penciled in the code of conduct and ethics continued discussion for the August work session. I'm still waiting to receive feedback from all of the council members, so either mark it up or provide comments that you have. And if you need another copy that you want to mark up, let me know, and I can send, you know, send that out again. The other announcement is that Ms. Gibbs and I will be at the North Carolina Association of Municipal Attorney Summer Conference this Thursday through Saturday in Beaufort. So, be patient with us if you have questions through that. But we'll be, they're learning lots of new things to bring to you, and inform you about when we get back.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we'll recognize council members for any council reports. We'll start at this end.
Just one thing, I'd like to thank Maria, Parks and Rec, and our town manager, that if you remember Lake Benson Park, where the Veterans Memorial is, before, you could ride bicycles across the bricks. It's kind of like riding over graveyard, in my opinion. Well, if you stop by today, we, they've started cutting the bypass that we had requested, so to end up with signage up saying, you know, runners, bikes, et cetera, take the bypass around, and, and don't be trampling over our memorial there. So, that, they were digging it today, and getting, getting busy on it. So, I really appreciate the Speedy and the Veterans Committee. We took a lot of pictures, and it meant a lot to a lot of people. And that's all.
Good, thank you very much. Mr. Singleton?
Yes, I want to thank staff for the work on getting the second, what was it, became a second entrance at the avenues at White Oak, the townhomes on Garner Road, where people were using it and wearing out the grass. There's a gate now, the sign that says, emergency services or fire department access only. And I hope that when the grass grows back, it'll, it'll look like the rest of the landscaping at the front. But that was a, a much-needed, and so I appreciate staff working on that, because it'll, it should prevent people from driving over, unless they want to get their vehicle tore up. Anyways, greatly appreciated.
That was a good touch.
Yes.
Yeah, just a couple of things. I want to thank staff, all of them, who were involved in providing all this information to us tonight. To Mr. Singleton's point earlier, oftentimes people will ask you about something that To Mr. Singleton's point earlier, oftentimes people will ask you about something they see, and if we don't know what they're talking about, we don't. That's frustrating, so I really appreciate. All the information took a long time to disseminate it, but it was good. And then I left at each of your places a letter, copy of proposal that was given to me by Dana Dixon with the Garner Arts, excuse me, Miss Garner Pageant Association, they would like us to consider designating a scholarship in memory of Harold Garner for all the work he did with the Miss Garner Association, so if we could just put that on a future agenda to discuss a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the heads up. Mr. Dallinger?
Yes, the question on the work that's going on on Pandora Springs between Timber and Buffalo Road, are they, is that part of the water main changes they're doing? I had some residents, they saw the flags, and now they've started to see the work, they wanted to know kind of what was going on and how long that would take, to know what's going on there. Somebody can send me an email.
We'll follow up on that.
Okay, yeah, they just wanted a timeline, because they were trying, they were having trouble mowing their yard with all the flags in the yard. The other is, I want to keep an eye on that. They did some signalization changes at Pandora Springs and Timber, and left this morning around 8:00, and that traffic on Pandora is back all the way up to almost the second Tiffany Circle entrance. Usually it's a pretty quick cycle, and you get a good light. It concerns me just because it's changed so dramatically, and even on the weekend, it's changed, where it's used to there for a long time, and it concerns me to be in with the fire station right there. If it backs up, people start to get impatient and not leave the space, they're used to leaving the space there for the fire trucks to get out. So I just want us to keep an eye on that intersection to make sure it's not getting too backed up, it just is. Saw them out there working on it a couple of weekends ago, I was like, I wonder what they're doing, now they go there and you sit up there at that light for about two or three minutes now, where, and miscycles. You know, where once it took one cycle to get through, now takes two, or if you're too far back, maybe three, so jury's out, but I'll be watching.
We'll also check to make sure that that work is final and was left as intended, because we have had situations where work to solve one thing with the signal left unintended consequences, so we'll immediately follow up to see if that was the intent, and then we'll talk to them about that. Thank you.
Because I don't know if it was because of changes that are coming or work they're doing, but I know it's definitely backed up a lot more than it used to, and there's not a lot of storage for that left turn. There were a couple of times where I don't think the left turn signal even came on, so it was like people were starting to then try to jump through the intersection, because they were like, I've been sitting here forever. So just keep an eye on that one and see if it's going to go back to what it was, or just, you know, I wanted to get out of control.
They were working on that last week, because all the lights were blinking, it was like suicide to pull out.
Yeah, and after that, that's when the light.
That's when it started happening.
Timing was way different.
And this is the school not in. Like Timber Drive, I think you started, or the one, but this is, most of the schools are not in, so that traffic is not out there either. So there's less traffic on the road.
Well, there were some school buses out there, because I guess they're a year-round.
The year-round are, but still, there's, you know, that's just Timber.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll follow up and get that information, see what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you for all the hard work, there's a lot of information given out tonight, and great information, the National Community Survey and the Texas Amendment information was a lot, a lot of work being done, and the hard work from the staff is appreciated.
Thank you, we can't say that off and up. Thanks for the good work. That being said, I think we have a closed session to address an issue.
Yes, we'd be requesting a closed session, and it would just be for, to discuss litigation, so there's just one closed session this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into a closed session pursuant to N.C. General Statute, Section 143.318.11, Subset A, Subset 3, to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation.
Second. Motion by Mr. Singleton, second by Mr. Matthews. If no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed by nay. Hearing done, we will move to the closed session, and we will return. Everybody stick around, stick around. Just kidding.
We convened the open session, back in the open session here, and I will call on our attorney for a report of what happened in the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council gave direction to the town attorney and the legal department on the handling of litigation, and I will report back later if there's a possible settlement of that litigation.
Thank you, thank you. Thank everyone for their participation. Is there any other business or any other discussion we need to address tonight? Hearing none, I will accept motion for adjournment. So moved, second?
Moved by Ms. Behringer and seconded by Mr. Vance, all in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by name. Hearing none unanimously, meeting stands adjourned. Thank you for a good job.